I can just add my observations to there.
That's fine, but we'll give you your own time period to do that.
Good afternoon, Elizabeth. I'm gonna change my background so I don't look like I'm sitting right next to them.
Well, it is a nice view. I will be right back. I'm just gonna grab some water.
It'll be interesting.
Yeah, you may have to get out and go back in, I bet.
Yeah, I think that's the case.
Yeah.
All right, well, I'll just.
Oh, well. Oh, and Dr. Pomeroy, Scott will be joining us at 1:30 when he's available.
Okay, fine. Hey, everyone.
Hello.
Morning.
I may have to step out briefly at 2:00, but I'll be right back. I have to go pick my dog up from the groomer. Sorry. I had to take him. I had to take him back. I couldn't get the smell out of him.
Oh, what happened?
He likes to do battle with skunks.
Oh, Lord.
I know.
Oh, my goodness.
So I took him earlier this morning, but he said he couldn't have him ready until 2:00. So if he calls, I gotta go because Eric's not around right now. Looked like a little poodle dog and all nice and white and pretty, and then he.
I have our colleague Brian Berry to facilitate and lead us through the discussion today. I believe our main objectives are to consider priorities for our superintendent, which would also, of course, be our priorities to pay attention to throughout the coming year. So with that introduction, my appreciation to all of you for being here, and Brian B., thank you for being with us today.
Great, thanks a lot, Elizabeth, and welcome to everyone. Thank you all for being here. And just to underscore, as Elizabeth said, after a long meeting on Thursday to take one day off and then to come back at it, I really appreciate it. We have quite a bit planned for today, so we're going to try to be efficient. I will be giving you various opportunities for participation and engagement. One thing I'm going to do a little bit differently is I'll probably limit, in certain sections, limit the amount of time that you will have to speak, so that we can hear from everyone and just so that we can be efficient with the limited amount of time. So what I'll do first is I'll start the PowerPoint and go through some preliminary thoughts, and then we can get to some opening statements by each of you. So let's start the PowerPoint real quick. So, welcome again, and it's great to be back with all of you. So interesting how each of these platforms is a little bit different. Oh, I think I figured it out. I can see you all now. All right. So, thank you, Elizabeth, for the introduction. What we are going to do today very specifically is three to four goals, identified three to four goals for the superintendent to be evaluated. And we did this last year. You provided me with a considerable amount of information. You are deep thinkers about these issues, and so I really appreciate that. And so I've done a couple of things to, shall we say, summarize the information that you gave me, and then we'll have a chance to talk about it. We may have the opportunity to be able to create strategies under those three to four priority areas, and possibly even if we're really efficient, we'll get to metrics. I realized in preparation that we actually did this over two sessions last year to get to the metrics, but we might be able to do it in one swing this year. So. Oh, and I was telling Diane before we started that the images that I'm utilizing for kind of background are to inspire and to give you kind of an uplifting feeling about our connection to nature. Just to refresh everyone. So it just, this is a very brief overview. In your packet, you were emailed a more in-depth agenda. So we had the introduction of the welcome. We'll talk about, we talked about our objectives. I'm going to go over the agreements real quickly. Then we're going to dive into an essence or an aspect of your policies or perspectives that help guide you called the PSD core values and beliefs. And I want all of us to take, and we'll only take about 10 minutes to go through them, but I want you to be thinking about how they guide you to be thinking about where the priorities are for superintendent evaluation and for your vision for the future of the district. And so I'll have you make a two- to three-minute statement, and then we'll go over the goal identification, and I have a list of all the goals that you have given to us, and then we'll prioritize those goals, and then talk a little bit about measurement accountability and what each of your roles is in that process to help make the superintendent successful. And then we'll do a quick summary and then affirmation and gratitude at the end. So just to be a little bit more concrete or specific about our objectives for today, I think every time you come together, you, there is a moment where you can get to know each other even a little bit better, listen to each other with, you know, a full heart, and to ultimately what that does is it strengthens your team. And especially in moments like this that aren't driven by decision-making agenda as far as like your monthly work plan that you have to complete. This is more of a contemplative, more of a philosophical, more of an analytical moment where hopefully, potentially, you can think a little bit about the organization's core beliefs and values and how they contribute to your perspective about priorities. So the consensus on the three priority, three to four priority areas, and then the system of measurement. So those are our outcomes for today. Agreements for engagement, we talked about this last year. I like to review them every time I work with groups, no matter how small they are or how large, but it's listening with an open heart and open mind, being available to all of the content that's coming at you or at me. Understand that we're all here for the same purpose, and we will talk a little bit more in depth about that purpose, but essentially it's for the kids. And some of you last year were very eloquent in your passion for the kids and their families. So that's why we're here. Remember that we'd like everyone to have the time to speak, so that's why I'm going to put some time limits on it, two, at least two of the areas when you're going to be presenting, just so that we can be efficient. And then all comments, no matter, you know, how it comes out, it has some value. It's up to us to figure out what that value is sometimes or to how to use it. But even if it feels like you don't agree with it in that moment, it will have some informative value for the rest of us. Appreciate this unique moment. You don't get very many opportunities to do this. And we're all, and what I liked, we started off on a really positive moment here, so I want to maintain that and include everyone in the discussion and maybe even have a little bit of fun, which I know you're all desirous of enjoying this experience. So, oh, before we leave that, is everyone okay with these? Or anyone have anything else you want to add to the agreements?
They're good.
Okay, I see some thumbs up and affirmations. All right.
How do we do our thumbs up here?
Yes, you can, you can do it physically or you can do it technologically. Either way is fine.
Okay.
So we're going to dive into the core values and beliefs of the district. Oh, that worked. Thanks, Elizabeth. District, and we're going to run this a little bit like a classroom. So some of you have been teachers or have spent time in the classroom. So the way this is going to work is this is going to be student participation, and just imagine yourselves for a minute as students. So I would like a volunteer who would like to read this values statement. Is there anyone who would like to do that?
I would.
Elizabeth, great. Why don't you start?
Our students come first. Our decisions are driven by what is best for them. Our policies, programs, and behaviors are based on our core values and beliefs.
Great. I want that to sit in just for a second. It is what, as I mentioned before, all of you or many of you verbalized last year, especially that first sentence. So it's, it's what drives us. It's what, it's what we're passionate about. It's what we're compassionate about. So let's go into that a little bit more deeply. So this is a statement that is in the core values and beliefs document. So this is also a part of your thinking around exceptional organizational culture, what it takes, what it demands, what it requires. So I would like a volunteer to read this. Tina.
I wasn't sure if you saw me. Hi, designing exceptional organizational culture. Pasadena Unified School District shall cultivate a culture of trust when employees, parents, students, and the community are welcomed, valued, and supported. We will collaborate with each other and our partners to achieve academic excellence, pursue continuous personal and professional improvement, and build positive relationships. We will celebrate our strengths and continually embrace our opportunities to improve as a community of learners.
Terrific. Thank you, Tina. Now, I want all of you to think about the the list of two or three goals or priorities that you sent to Diane and ultimately to me. Where's their overlap with what you sent in? Where, where do you see alignment? Because there is quite a bit, because I've read all of your work.
Do you want us to answer that or right now?
I'm gonna have you answer it in just a minute. We're gonna look at one more level of this. But I absolutely do want you to answer it, but I want each one of you to answer it independently. So let's do one more level, and I'll be looking for. So what I'd like in this section is for each one of you to read one of these. Since Michelle and Scott are not here, some of you will have to read two. But we've started off really well. Who hasn't gone yet who would like to read one of these? Kim.
Sorry, I have to make it larger. Integrity. We say what we mean and we do what we say. We meet or exceed professional standards and legal requirements. Do you want me to do two or just?
No, we'll circle back to you.
Okay.
So let's go on to, who would like to read respect? Patrick or Jennifer?
I'll go. I kind of wanted to do transparency, but I'll do respect. Our behaviors, policies, and programs affirm the worth and personal dignity of all students, employees, and community members. We foster our climate of civility, collegiality, tolerance, and reasoned debate, embracing our diversity as a strength that adds vibrancy and creativity to our perspectives, deliberations, and decisions.
Terrific. Again, as we pause in between each of these, reflect on what you submitted and how it relates to what you're reading. Reflect on what you submitted and how these then guide us to be thinking about priorities for the superintendent. Where is that alignment? Where is that agreement? And again, having read all of them, I see it. It is there. I just want you all to be able to verbalize it. So Jennifer, are you there? Would you like to read transparency?
I can. I'm on my phone, so it's always very difficult for me to read.
Oh, okay.
So it's, I'm gonna open it up here, but it, and then the text is popping up here, so, all right. Let's, I, for some reason, I've got the text from our conversations popping up, so, all right. Transparency. We encourage diverse input and differing opinions. We make our decisions openly. We make information easily accessible to everyone.
Thank you, Jennifer. That's great. And just a quick observation. I was in the classroom this week. I was up at PHS for some senior project presentation, so I was on a couple of panels to listen to the senior projects. And so listening to staff talk about the challenges of having students on WebEx or Google Meets, whatever the platform is, and have some students in class, and having some students logging in on cell phones and other students logging in on tablets or other students logging or not being able to log in and their bandwidth and everything. So I just wanted to point out that we're experiencing exactly what many teachers experience in this scenario. So, all right, who would like to read? Let's do another round, because Scott and Michelle aren't here yet. So who would like to read equity? Kim.
We believe that every child is equally entitled to high-quality education and that different needs require different levels of resources to enable all children to achieve their full potential.
Terrific. Thank you. Accountability, Patrick.
Accountability. We take responsibility for our actions, decisions, and outcomes. We are committed to continuous improvement and use evidence-based approaches to identify improvements that support student success.
Wonderful. Collaboration?
I can do that one.
Great.
Collaboration. We value the participation of parents, students, and the community in all aspects of PSD. We actively seek mutually beneficial partnership with people and organizations.
Yep, and again, so many of the, or all of these are reflected in your priorities. So fiscal responsibility, Jennifer or Elizabeth? And Elizabeth, could you unmute yourself?
Fiscal responsibility. We maintain the public trust by providing high-quality services and by using our resources prudently, efficiently, and equitably. Preserving the longer-term financial viability, the longer-term financial viability of the district is always a key factor in our decisions.
Terrific. Thank you. And Jennifer, are you able to see the last one?
Innovation. We inspire and empower innovative thought and practice while building sustainable systems that ensure every student excels academically, socially, and emotionally.
Terrific.
Brian?
Yeah, Kim.
One of our sheets had a ninth value, but I also was trying to find this text of our values, and I couldn't find it. It's, the values themselves are part of our 2016-2020 strategic plan document, but not the things that we just read. I find some of them on 2010, but we added two things, so I don't know where. Just wondering what the source of all of this is or if someone could find this on our website if they want to.
Yeah, the missing core values, excellence, I believe. And I too could not find these definitions online, but they are prominently displayed throughout the Ed Center on those little picture frame things. So what we'll do is we'll update the website to include the core values with definitions.
I think they were put up yesterday, Brian.
Oh, very.
I asked Bridgette to put them up once I had them.
Excellent.
Well, I'll raise, I'll raise this issue now because I think I've raised it with you guys before. The 1620 strategic plan, which is on our website, under District Initiatives, under the Board, I can't find where our board approved it in 2015 or 2016. So I'm just gonna let that sit there for a minute. But it would be good if there was some documented vote of the board to approve it. But, but that, there is a document on our website that says 2016-2020 strategic plan.
Terrific. So Brian and Diane will take care of both those items, the first one being posting on the website and the second one being a note or a statement that says that it was, the strategic plan was approved by the board. Thank you, Kim, for bringing up both those issues.
Well, Brian, they, Brian, they can't say it's approved unless they actually find a board meeting where we approved it. I can't find such a thing. That's what I'm saying.
Hey, I just want to let you know that I got the bright idea to grab my laptop and put it in the car with me, so I'm actually listening, but I can't participate because I'll be driving again in a few seconds.
Thanks, Michelle, for letting us know. And let us know when you are back in range to be able to participate.
I will. Thank you.
So are we going to agendize the approval? Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, I'll just remind us, we were gonna do an RFP and do a brand-new strategic plan, so I'm not sure it makes sense to go back, but I just, I was a little taken aback when I couldn't figure out where we approved it.
Yeah. I do remember us, and this was when Mercy Santoro was here. I do remember us presenting all of this to the board. So Diane, I'm sure will go back and look to see if it was in fact approved. But if not, going forward, when we develop the new strategic plan, it definitely will be approved by the board. Or presented to the board for approval. Let's put it that way.
Great. Thank you, Brian. Okay. Now you're all going to get a chance to talk a little bit more. So now that these have, now that we've gone over the core values and beliefs and you've seen their richness, and I would say their breadth and their compassion, let's talk a little bit about, and we'll have two to three minutes. How do you see that what you just read aligns with what you submitted and your idea or vision for the priorities and goals for the superintendent? And I'm gonna take the screen share off so that we can have a discussion for about 15, 20 minutes about those. So who would like to go first? Kim. And again, just so that everyone can speak, if you could think about, about three-minute comment, two to three-minute comment, that would be great. Thank you.
So in addition to the core values and beliefs, we have our strategic directions that are part of our plan, and I know that those are aligned with our LCAP goals. And so I kind of have a question as we move farther on about what we're doing today in terms of where it fits into our overall picture. But what I wrote down as my vision was a high-functioning, accountable, transparent organization and academic achievement for all, three underlined, students. So that's the vision. I mean, I think there's a lot of overlap with both the values and our strategic directions. So I think my goals align with those as well, the ones I'm proposing for today.
Yeah, and I will, I'll, once everybody has spoken, I'll go over the strategic directions briefly too, because I did see those earlier today. And there is overlap there too, which is fabulous. Okay, thank you, Kim. Who would like to share what they're thinking right now? Patrick.
Yeah, I can go. So it's occurred to me over the several years that I've been a school board member that the reflection of what we're trying to do versus the community impression of what we're trying to do is sometimes very disjointed. And so I looked at our foundational principles, which I don't think anybody finds objectionable, with sort of a failure analysis eyeball. So what to the extent that we get criticism and feedback, it's often on a lack of trust or a lack of transparency or, you know, something of that nature. And oftentimes, I think that's because the public does not adequately understand who is doing what inside the district and why. So my goals were very much focused on improving the sort of shining a spotlight on how the organization works to the public and the board. Because I think that feeds into a lot of the trust issues that we have and it follows the goals of transparency and accountability. I do want to take one second to say one lesson I thought I learned from last year's process and the outcome was, I thought it was when we picked goals that had strong associated metrics, we got better responses and a better evaluation than when we picked goals that had weaker metrics. And so I also very much took a focus on deliverables. Like what can we produce that shows the superintendent is doing his job? Because if we can't, if we can't tie it into a metric that we can measure and demonstrate, I think that makes it for a difficult goal to defend or to, you know, give the superintendent a strong response on his evaluation. So I tried to avoid what I thought were goals that had squishy metrics or metrics that I thought weren't going to be ones that we could we could measure in a way that we would be satisfied with. And I also tried to focus on goals that I thought were operationally executable within a year. So the things that things that I see as the things that obviously the districts should do and are very important to do, but are things that are difficult to measure or we can't implement in a year. I did not, I deprioritized in my suggestions for goals. And I'm sorry that they are late, but they, Ms. Rona has them and she should be forwarding to everyone. And for the sake of abridging them for people that haven't had time to read them yet, it essentially was one of Scott's and one of Kim's.
Well, you'll have, actually, you'll have time to defend them shortly. If you don't mind waiting, that's going to be our next phase. And two quick comment or a question and a comment. The comment is, your description of metrics is extremely helpful. And if we have time to get to the metrics section, which I'm anticipating and hoping we will, then we want to circle back to what you just said, every time we consider a metric. The question is, just to clarify, are you saying then that part of what you were proposing is that public understanding of district function should be improved?
Yeah, I'd like the, I think that, you know, fundamentally, our education approach is good. And I don't knock the dedication of the workers that we have. But I feel like a pretty common pattern in complaints that rise to the level of the board attention are on, I have this issue. I inserted it into what I thought was the proper channel. And I have, I have no idea where that is right now. And it's difficult, both for members of the public and frankly, for members of the board to figure out where there is a problem, if there is a problem, on some of these sorts of issues. So, you know, we can say, we can refer them to the proper staff member. But I think in many cases, our idea of the proper staff member is one or two or three steps above the person that's actually tasked with currently, you know, where that complaint or issue is in the resolution process. And I think a lot of the trust that problems that the district has comes from people just not knowing who's currently handling their issue. And if that person is having difficulties resolving it, where they should escalate it to. So that's
Yep, great. Thank you. That clarifies it. Okay. Elizabeth, Jennifer or Tina, who would like to? Okay, Elizabeth.
I could go. Yes. In looking at the ideals and values that we have just submitted, I want to focus on the concept of the joy of learning, which is part of our, part of our vision statement. Because I think we're at the level, are we not at the level of talking about our vision for, for the next year?
Yes.
And how, and how the goals that we want to hand to our superintendent can be tied into this vision, which we have, have already crafted in that brief statement. I also want to give a kind of additional feature to what Patrick is saying about communication. He was talking about enhancing communication about complaints and how complaints are resolved. I would like us also to pay close attention to communicating the values that you just put up on your screen sharing. And I know that there, some of our schools have the program called Leader in Me. Are you familiar with that? The leader in me? And there are certain ideals that that program has. And they focus on one goal at a time. For one example is begin with the end in mind. And what they do, I believe they take one week at a time or a certain time period and they focus on that one thing. We just read aloud possibly seven different qualities or features. If we were to focus on one at a time and assess how we are faring in in achieving that part of the vision, I think it might be helpful, that one at a time approach. And then I have some more to say, which is probably related to the proposed goals we have, have submitted. So I just, those are my thoughts at the moment about aligning with the core values that you, we just read aloud.
Great. Thank you. And again, you're right. We will circle back and give you all another opportunity to share about your goals and why you proposed the ones that you did. Okay, so Tina or Jennifer? Okay, Tina?
Okay, so we're looking at these core values, right?
Yes.
Okay, so the ones that pop out at me and I think apply to our immediate future in the next two to four years is we are coming out of, hopefully coming out of COVID pandemic. And I feel like this past year or two has been really tumultuous and people are wanting stability. So I think what resonates with me of these core values is maybe some fiscal responsibility and accountability and excellence. And excellence to me is, is the student achievement aspect. And I think our board has expressed in the past that we believe that's a priority. So that's what guided my goals, that I wanted to focus on student achievement, that we can define metrics for that. And I'm glad that trustee Kenny had sent us the strategic plan from previous years because it's based on our LCAP. And I, I believe the LCAP should be our, our shining north star when we set goals. So, and that reminded me actually of when we reviewed our LCAP, I was really saddened and disappointed that our performance for certain groups and student groups are so low. And I really want us to do better there. And not just incrementally better, but a lot better. And, you know, there's like, you know, math power hour, which I'm really happy to see that's happening. So we're getting there and I, I'm glad we have programs like that. Anyway, so my focus is stability and student achievement.
Wonderful. Thank you for summarizing that, Tina. It was well stated. Jennifer? What are your thoughts? Does it appear as though she's still with us? Oh.
Oh, like I said, I'm on my phone. So, you know, I know this is a very mixed group and some of us have been on the board for a really long time. And I'm really trying to understand the function of our board and really educating myself on that. And I'm, I focused on enrollment and increasing it. Big goal. Big goal. And I also, part of that is focusing on the board superintendent relationship. And that's a really important one to me because we're a governance team. And I've been reading a couple of books. This one, The Five Habits of High-Impact School Boards, which I saw on Terri Vial's shelf when I looked at her GoFundMe. And I can't get the background off. I'm sorry. I, I don't know why. And the other one is what CSBA gave us, the Governance Core. And in the five habits in the High-Impact School Board, these are the things we always have to be working on as a school board. One is concentrating on governing above all else. Develop our capacity to govern professional development. Play an active role in leading innovation and change. Pay close attention to the board superintendent partnership. I know we're his employer, but we're also the partners. That's a very difficult balance beam. And to reach out externally and internally and to our, to the groups, our stakeholders, as we call them. And in the Governance Core, I really loved this quote. Our vision is of a governance system. School board and superintendent working together as a cohesive, unified team with a common vision, driven by a shared moral imperative. I want to do more of working with this whole team as we move forward. And integrity and accountability come into this relationship. And holding ourselves accountable, like internally, holding myself accountable is always on my mind. And sometimes I succeed and sometimes I fail. But it's super important. Because if we come together as a team and really have the facts behind us, then all of that is reflected from the boardroom out to the community. And I do believe in increasing enrollment. And I know some people say, how are you going to do that when 49% of the people don't put their kids in PUSD? Because this is a great district. And we have things that other schools do not have. And I don't just mean programs. And this district has the capacity to be absolutely the best in the state. I think we're already there, but people just don't know it. And I want to work with the superintendent on achieving that vision. Thank you.
Great. And thank you for tying it back to the core values and beliefs and adding the accountability and the integrity. That was really helpful. And you will be able to, Jennifer, in a few more minutes, to say more about your, the goals that you have proposed. We'll go into those in a little bit more depth. Michelle, have you been tracking enough to be able to make a comment about the core values and beliefs and how they inform your priorities for the superintendent?
Sure. You know, first of all, I'm I'm a little concerned that we went through the process of creating a mission statement for the district. And I feel like what we're doing right now is we're rehashing in a way that doesn't, I don't feel that this conversation or this process is inclusive of the current vision statement that we have. In other words, you know, we're restating what our visions are for the superintendent or for the district. But I've only heard one person really speak to the fact that, you know, the new, the current vision statement is something that, you know, she, her vision or her goals align with. And I think that's important. When, when I was asked, when we were asked to submit to, what was it? We, two goals to you for, I don't remember how the question went because I'm not looking at it. I'm trying to pull everything up on my email, but I'm not getting to it fast enough.
It's okay. It's for superintendent evaluation.
For the superintendent. So, you know, I didn't understand, after I submitted my two points, I did not, I went back and I thought, why are we doing it this way? When we went through that entire process around his evaluation, where we came up with recommendations? And so why aren't we now lending more of a focus to taking those recommendations and turning them into goals? So that we ensure that the superintendent is following whatever it is the board outlined for his improvement or for him to work on, to accomplish within the perimeters of the evaluation. So that when we, when we check in with him, we already have that and we can look at it to assess, you know, how much it's moved one way or the other. The other thought that came to me was, you know, I'm not so certain that we are focusing enough on the culture of this board. Like, could some of our part of the evaluation, the superintendent's evaluation, where we feel like he could do better or he hasn't been able to accomplish his goals or whatever it is, could some of that be due to our leadership? Because I believe the district is a reflection of its leadership and the board is at the top of that. And so it just, it breaks my heart to know that there are people in our workforce that we employ as a district who are reluctant to approach the superintendent or a board member because they feel that, they feel like they're going to be reprimanded or that they may lose their job or that it's a form of disrespect. So the culture of the district does not, in my opinion, align with board members being appointed to be liaisons at the various school districts and, you know, working and hearing and meeting with the school site administration or parents or anybody for that fact. It doesn't align with us doing that as board members and then coming back and sharing that information with district leadership or the superintendent. Because when you have to not say someone's name because they've come to you with a concern and you can't say someone's name, it, it doesn't lend itself to enough importance or credibility to make leadership even want to address the issue. But if you say someone's name, there's a chance that they're going to get pushed back. If a teacher comes to a board member, that principal is going to get pushed back because that teacher came to a board member. That is the culture of this district. And that is the part that I want to change as a board member. That is the part, we are all here for one reason. And we need to see each other in our various levels of leadership in this district. We need to see each other as one team. My goal as a board member is not to reprimand the superintendent because one of his site administrators or teachers has a complaint or a concern about something that's going on. My role is to take that information and bring it to the superintendent. And my expectation is that he's going to address the issue or work to resolve the issue. So we, go ahead. I'm sorry, because you know, I
Well, can, can we, a couple of things real quick. Can we break down some of the topic areas that you've discussed and respond to them? And then secondly, I know you were kind of in and out there for a while. But for this first part, our hope was that each board member would take about two to three minutes to
No, I heard, I heard everything. I was in. I heard you guys.
Okay.
But I'm just, I, you know what? I, it's hard for It's hard for me right now, it's hard for me to move forward. Because this has been a passion of mine for a long time and it just does not seem to be addressed. I feel like this is just scattering us out further away from the current vision. I'm going to go through this process and see how you bring us back. Because I'm sure there's a method to your madness. But I'm just saying, as a board member, my goal is to continue to work on the culture of this board and to work on the culture of district leadership as a whole. I want everybody to feel comfortable talking to everybody. And I don't want that sense of being threatened, feeling threatened because you voice a concern. I just, or a complaint.
Great. So let's, let's deal with the issues that you brought up because it'll be hard to move on unless we do. So I'm asking the rest of the board members to be patient with us. And Kim, hang on just a second. Let me sort of tee it up. And Brian, I'm going to ask you for a little bit of input as well. So on the contributions or the documents that everyone sent in, culture was raised several times. So we will be talking about culture definitively, specifically, not so much about the board itself. So just to clarify, this particular endeavor today is more about superintendent goals and not specifically about board relationships or board internal goals. I would propose and hope that that would be another conversation that you all would have and not, not to try to tackle that today. The second one was the use of core values and the apparent sort of missing the new mission and vision, which by the way, I think are very impressive. It was, there is no slight, there is no missing. It all goes together and if, and once it's all on the website, then they will be vision, mission, core values, guiding principles, all together. So they all collaborate with one another. Before I leave that topic, Brian, can you talk a little bit about how you feel about the core values contributing to this conversation?
Sure. I was happy to hear both Dr. Palmeroy and talk about the district's vision and mission statements. Because quite frankly, the core values determine basically the how. You know, the mission statement is the why. And the core values determine the how. So it determines, you know, how well you actualize your mission. And so as I'm going back and looking at the key components of the mission statement, I see the alignment between those components and the core values. And the core values are an important part of the culture of the district. So everything, I believe, should be in alignment. And, you know, this is something that I want to focus on, quite frankly, for the rest of this school year and the upcoming school year. And that is to bring more of an awareness of our core values and how we all should align our personal values with those core values. We all should comport to them in order to actualize our mission. You know, the key question that we should ask is, what is it like to work in our school system? And I would want to hear our employees say that we enjoy working in the school district. And I'd like to hear our parents say, you know, we enjoy and we appreciate sending, sending our students to school every day. And we believe that we get great educational value from the Pasadena Unified School District. So, so this is quite important. This is something, again, that we will be focusing on. And so I'm glad that we're having this conversation today.
Brian, thank you. And just to reiterate, culture, district culture, both on an employee level and on a student level or an environmental level, came out extremely clearly in the documents that you sent to me and Diane Ann. They are, they will be, once you see how they've been collated, you'll see that they are touched on and absolutely the feeling that an employee is valued, is appreciated, is retained, and is, has the opportunity to be promoted. That is definitely within what has been shared already. And again, in the document that summarizes, I've created a document that summarizes all of your comments. And I'll go over that in a few minutes. The one other area, thank you, Brian, for that helpful comment. The one other area that Michelle raises that I think needs to be discussed, so I'd like to hear a brief thought or comment from anyone who has a perspective on this. And that's, so, the development of priority areas to evaluate the superintendent. Should those come from the content that you've sent? Or should those come from last year's evaluation? Is essentially what Michelle was saying. We started off on a process of asking for your input. And my assumption was, having not spoken to any of you in a while, was that you were using some of what you learned through last year's process to be able to inform what you wanted to do this year. So Elizabeth, I saw your hand up. What, what are your thoughts about that?
Yes. Not only that we were thinking about last year's process and how to improve it and carry it forward, but I think that I, at least, in my writing of the proposed goals for the coming year, I did look back at what we called recommendations from the previous evaluation. And I think I have incorporated them, although we were asked to only produce two, and I think I produced three. There's no extra credit, is there?
No.
Oh, shoot.
No, no extra credit, unfortunately.
Anyway, I think perhaps other people also looked back at last year's recommendations and carried them forward into this year's goals. But I did, and we'll see if some other people did that as well.
Okay, we'll go to Tina next and then Scott.
I like that idea of looking at the recommendations from previous year that provides continuity. And unfortunately, I didn't think of doing that. But I think maybe that should be a standard process. Next time, we should tack on that document next time we are in this process.
Great. Thank you, Tina. Scott and then Patrick.
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, yeah, the two priorities that I submitted, one of them was directly from the superintendent evaluation. And it was about budgeting and the phenomenon that we've experienced in the last several years of being told we have no money during interim budgets and during adopted budgets and then in the unannulated actuals, having significant reserves. And so one of my priorities was definitely a follow-up on that. It's about more, and I was just guessing at the metrics because I'm not in the business department, but I was guessing about more frequent reconciliations. And I set a target to reduce the variance between the adopted budget and the unannulated actuals of less than $3 million, which I think is a reasonable target. This circles back to our core values. And I heard, I heard Brian talking about core values, so I just looked at them. Fiscal responsibility is one of those values that was sent to us in the email documents. And that, that value says, we use our resources prudently, efficiently, and equitably, preserving the long-term financial viability of districts is always a key factor. So that leads me to my other priority, which was about the equitable part of that. I just don't think it's equitable anymore. And this has been a years-long struggle of mine to have more administrative personnel each year while enrollment is going down. I just don't think that's fair. So that was my other priority, to try to come up with maybe an enrollment-based staffing ratio for central administration, because we have enrollment-based ratios basically for every other kind of staff. And so then this also circles back to transparency, right? We tend to add positions without a lot of transparency. It just sort of happens. And when, over time, it just adds up. So, okay, that's enough for me. I heard Brian, so I'll stop.
Well, Scott, keep, keep those thoughts in mind. The main question was utilizing last year's evaluation as a basis for superintendent goals for this year.
Oh, yeah. I don't think, yeah, I don't think it's exclusive. It's not one or the other. Those were, we went over those. We discussed them as ideas or goals for this coming year is the way we discuss them. And, you know, Michelle mentioned culture and morale and this budgeting thing was mentioned in his eval. But of course, there's other ideas. You're hearing about test scores from certain people or student achievement, to put it another way, which goes back to equity.
Yeah. So it sounds like what you're saying is that it's a combination.
Accountability is another core value I'm looking at. So I think, I don't think it's, it's one or the other. I think certainly continuous improvement indicates that we should take our lessons learned, yes, and use those for the following year. But there's also other ideas.
Yeah. So it sounds like it's a combination of both, some...
Yeah, I mean, I've mentioned, I mean, I'll be quiet. I mentioned the, part of the reason I mentioned the reduction in...
And Scott...
...the process. We're undergoing negotiations. Sorry?
You don't, you don't have to explain. I'm just...
Oh, okay.
...summarizing what you said. So, so that we can go on and hear...
Negotiations have just been happening and so I was aware of the need for money. So...
Yeah. So that we can go on and hear, we'll go to Patrick next and then to Kim.
Okay. So, yeah, I did, so I took a sort of three-pronged approach to this goal session. Number one, yeah, I did look at last year's evaluation. The thing that, the two main things that I focused on in, in coming up with my two, and again, I apologize that they got to you guys late, was the way I looked at this, at this as, as a writing prompt for us as individuals. So one of the things that I think we learned out of last year's evaluation process is that we probably went too broad. Like, we had too many different themes. So I focused on, okay, so if I can only pick two, which two do I think are the most important? And then when we get to the, the board conversation, we'll figure out what the board consensuses are the two most important. That doesn't mean the superintendent's not going to do the other things. It's just those are the, these are the ones that, that we feel should be the highest areas of focus. The other thing that I thought about from, from last year's process, and I think this is sort of, a lot of this depends on, on the individual board member, but I tried to separate what I would call proximate goals from root goals, right? Like, so there are things that if we do them, other things will happen, right? As a natural consequence. And there are other things that if we focus on them, they might happen, but that doesn't necessarily mean that we will get the other thing as a consequence. This is one of the reasons why, you know, constantly bring up, well, if we just focus on increasing a percentage in an outcome, we might get that because the, the district might, you know, make that its focus. But that doesn't necessarily mean that we will get the better education out of it. Whereas if we focus on improving, you know, educational processes and how, you know, the support we give to teachers and things like that, then we would probably naturally assume that we would get better test score results, you know, as, as a, as an outcome as well. So I tried to think about the things that I think of are sort of the longstanding issues that, that I see as problems with the district. And if we correct those, will we get additional benefits as well? So that's how I chose my priorities. And that's why, for example, you know, I didn't choose focusing on, on enrollment as a, as a goal. There's, there's other reasons for that too. But because I think if we just continue to get better as a district, we will also improve our enrollment situation. So that was, you know, and it's fine that different board members have different ideas about, you know, where we should, what, you know, how improving a focus in an area will then have secondary benefits in other places. But that, that was my, my thinking of where I got to where I...
So, but just to clarify, and again, I don't need an explanation, but just to clarify, you used last year's evaluation as a, you reviewed it as a starting point, but then you used other criteria to come up with new goals. Is that correct?
Yeah. I, you know, I figured that every year, we're going to have a different idea about what we think the current problem, biggest problem is this year. So last year's ideas about what we thought were big problems are still relevant. Of course, they're very important. And I don't think anybody thinks that, you know, things that we thought were problems last year aren't necessarily problems this year either. It was just a matter of, I get to pick two to make my case for, for today. So I think, you know, as a side note, I think this process worked pretty reasonably well last year in spite of the, you know, the limitations in the superintendent's evaluation that I think we all agree happened. So I like this approach of, you know, us really trying to focus our own individual attention on the things that we think are most important. And then having a conversation about, okay, so the seven board members agree that these 14 things are all pretty important. Which, which ones, then, do we really want the superintendent to focus on? And I think that's the fairest, you know, way to evaluate the superintendent.
So I need to notify all of you that there are certain privacy issues, personnel issues with discussing the last year's evaluation, the content of it. So let's, I'm, I'm just trying, just to reiterate, I'm just trying to say, should we, I just want to be very clear. Should we, Michelle's question was, should we use last year's evaluation as a starting point for goals for evaluation for the superintendent for this year or not? I appreciate the content that's been provided by several of you, but it's, it's pretty straightforward. Is this, is this how we want to make the decision or not? Kim, it's up to you. Or you're up next.
It's all up to me. So the answer to your question is yes. Some of my recommendations came from things that were, that we identified as needing further work. And because we were really focused on the pandemic in our goals last year, I think some of mine is different because it just wasn't a focus last year. So it wasn't part of what we discussed in the evaluation. But I did want to respond a little bit to something that Michelle brought up and maybe it also touches on what Jennifer said. So when we talk about the board's culture and the, the board being, holding itself accountable and the board relationship with the superintendent, I don't think that's part of our superintendent evaluation, but it certainly is part of our board evaluation. And so that, and I just can't remember exactly when we do that or when we did our last one. But I, I think that, you know, that, we certainly do need to schedule that and do that. And I think that will be good conversations as well. Because you're right, I can't remember if Jennifer or Michelle said it. We certainly can't ding the superintendent for things caused by a relationship that isn't what it ought to be. But again, that, there's a place for that in our board evaluation, hopefully.
Yes. And you did it in, it was like, I mean, you talked about it in April last year. So that would be a separate, and, and I mentioned it too, but it's a separate process from what we're doing today. And, and go ahead and unmute when you can.
I said, I wanted to thank Kim for what you...
I said, I, I wanted to thank Kim for what she said because I did have that in mind when I wrote it. And that's why I prefaced what I said with, people have had a lot more experience with this than I have on superintendent goals. I mean, that's, that's a big deal, right? And I haven't been on the board that long, but I do know from what I've been studying, reading and talking to people about, that that board superintendent relationship is essential for achieving goals. And it's hard to set up those goals for our superintendent when we ourselves haven't had done the work of governance and coherence, being, you know, and, and all of that. And, um, so at any rate, that's it.
Hey, Jennifer, that's, yeah, Jennifer, that's, that's a, that's a great point. Um, and, and it leads to what Michelle was talking about too. So just to kind of link that, uh, it is very tough for teams to be evaluating other entities, activities, uh, people if they are not coalesced, if they are not, if they are not, um, working closely together, if they don't have, uh, trust. Um, that being said, a couple of things. One is as representatives of the school board or the school district, it is your evaluation or your responsibility to evaluate the superintendent. So it, you kind of can't get around that. So you have to figure out, are we going to do it now? Are we going to do it later? Um, you know, historically and possibly, I mean, this would be a Diana O'Brien question, possibly even legally, you need to do it within a certain timeframe. Um, and so that is why it is, one other point is that you need to be able to give whoever you're evaluating adequate time to be able to respond. So the reason why we pulled this together quickly, uh, in January was so that, uh, the superintendent, whatever you laid out for him as expectations, he would have the whole year to be able to work on it. Not nine months, not six months, but the whole year so that then, um, at the end of the year, then you could, uh, complete your evaluation. And by the way, I have a different format for this year for the evaluation form, which I think, uh, could be helpful to all of you. Um, you have to simultaneously get along with one another while you're doing other things, while you are, um, taking care of tasks that are your responsibility, which is the, one of the biggest ones for you, which you all know, is the superintendent selection, uh, communication, uh, partnership, relationship and evaluation. You're it. You're the people who do that. So, you know, some of what we outlined last year for you to think about as far as building your culture, your board culture, where, um, sitting down and talking to each other on a regular basis, going to schools together, going to events together. So my question for all of you, and I don't need an answer, and Michelle, I'm going to go to you next. I don't need an answer, but I just want you to think about, what have you done on those, um, suggestions for you to build your culture since April of last year? How many times have you had, even if it's a virtual coffee, because the pandemic's, uh, you know, uh, hampered all of our lives and all of our, um, opportunities, but when did you have a virtual coffee with one of your, um, board member colleagues? When did you talk about, hey, let's watch together, let's watch, um, Elliot's musical or whatever's coming up? Or, um, what did you think of Marshall's newspaper that was just released? How, how good are you at offline, uh, relationship building with your, um, board members, with your fellow board members? It can't just happen at these meetings. You have to do some work outside of it. So, um, Michelle, I think that we've, um, responded to your, your important points. And just to summarize, it, it feels like some of the board members, actually many of the board members utilized the, the content from the evaluator, the superintendent evaluations helped draft their goals for this year. Not everybody, some of them have, and it informed them on what the priorities should be for this year. So, um, Michelle, what are, what are your thoughts now?
So my thoughts are this. When it comes time for the evaluation process next year, are we going to look at the document that was created to, um, that contains our commendations and recommendations? Or are we going to look at what comes out of this process to govern or to determine how we rate him or what we use as a measuring metric, I should say, as a metric for assessment for his, his performance? That's, that's my concern because it's really hard to do that, go through that process. And those of us who have knowledge of prior evaluations and prior recommendations or prior goals refer to those in that conversation where those of us who don't have that prior knowledge, we're clueless. It's like, where is this coming from? And, you know, you know, what document are we using? How does this really work? You know what I'm saying? So that's.
Absolutely.
That's part of the reason why I'm, I'm like thinking, why are we creating? It, it felt like, or it feels like we're creating a totally new set of, of goals when I see, just by reading the recommendations, not discussing any parts of his evaluation, but I'm talking about the recommendations that was on that sheet that we did, the recommendations and commendations. I see goals within those recommendations that we could certainly, um, use to, um, to, uh, turn into goals for the superintendent. As a matter of fact, that's what I thought with that, that's what I thought that entire process was doing.
So I have a proposal or a, a question, then we'll go to Scott and then to Kim. But, uh, Michelle, um, would the, the next step in this process was for each of you to do kind of a pitch or maybe not a pitch, but more of an explanation of why you picked what you did, you know, in two or three minutes? Um, as we go over those, is, do you think that there's the ability for us to be able to tie them to those recommendations and to see where there's a correlation? Is that, is that possible that we could do that simultaneously? And if so, would that, um, be helpful or would, would that accomplish what you're proposing?
Well, you know, it would make sense. And to hear that, you know, several of my colleagues, I guess you're talking about you use that particular document that contained the recommendations?
Yeah, Patrick and Scott for sure. And I think Elizabeth said that they did.
So I'm sure that, um, I mean, if, if that's what happened, then it, it would naturally tie into that. So I'm, it's not that I'm trying to, 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 okay, let me say it this way. What I want to accomplish is I want to have us focused. Like, it seems like these conversations that we have where it feels like we're creating something new every time or reinventing something, we end up weighed out, you know, not with a, with a broad focus. And I want us to bring the focus in so that we can better, um, direct or govern or I, I don't know what the word is, but assess the superintendent. And the superintendent is not like trying to figure out what it is we really want because on this hand, we said one thing and then when we had this event and we came up with this thing, we said this thing. So how does he have, how does he bring it together? And how do we, how do we now assess his progress when he's really trying to do this over here? Because it was the second thing that we came up with and we're looking at what we did over here and we're saying, oh, you didn't meet this over here.
Yeah.
Because you were doing, you know what I'm saying? And that's what I feel, that's what, that's what I feel is happening. I just, I, I just feel like we're not together. And the other piece is what you said. I don't think that there's so much distrust among the board. Um, that's, that's not my concern. My concern is that the board has not come together. We haven't, our governance style, like, it still seems too, too independent of our own values and our own leadership styles. And I just don't feel like we're together in that.
Yeah, that makes, yep, that makes sense. Um, yes, you need to, there needs to be a, um, shall we say, just a, um, a common sort of perspective on governments and leadership that you all share.
Yeah, I think, I think the thing that we're all missing, I'm gonna let you talk, I'm gonna let you go, but just let me say this. I think the thing that we really need to focus on are the relationships all the way from top to bottom. It's relationships.
Good.
And that's the thing that we keep skipping over. We keep skipping over that.
Well, and again, just to remind everyone what we did last year, that was a primary focus of the board goals, not the superintendent goals. And so those, those are things that you all have to work on, both individually and collectively. So, uh, we have a queue and, uh, so it's Scott, Elizabeth, Kim, uh, and Jennifer had her hand for a minute. Uh, nope, okay. So, and I'm, I just want to ask all, all three of you who are in the queue, uh, just to be brief and go right to the point. So let's go to Scott first and Elizabeth and Kim.
Yeah, the, my answer to Michelle's question is what we're creating now, the priorities for this year, just like we did last year, uh, is what the superintendent will be evaluated on. Uh, certainly that's informed by last year's experience. And I already said that, and one of my goals was clearly from that. The other was from, and I know I'll have two minutes soon, was from the need for, um, money in the coming years and because of our negotiations goals. But, um, we have to take what we learned and put it into a new document. Yes, just like we did last year, priorities for the year, and then come up with metrics.
Thank you, Scott. Uh, Elizabeth?
Yes, I, I think we need to be aware that the priorities that were set for last year are not necessarily the same as the priorities for this year. Last year was a difficult COVID year. This year, according to some of our principals, is even harder than last year. So the, what we, I, I want, I hope that we will be in, in the present, so to speak, and look at this, what this year especially needs, uh, for us to ask of our superintendent. Because this year's goals will not necessarily be just the same ones that were perhaps not fully completed last year. We need to turn to the present and look at the goals for this year.
Right, great. Thank you, Elizabeth. Uh, conditions change. Kim, you're, you're next.
So I, I think everyone remembers that the superintendent evaluation has two parts. One, where we reviewed the priorities and the metrics we set and looked at the performance based on those metrics. And the other section, and I would have to go back to see where many of the, um, commendations, you know, the recommendations for further work. I, I have a feeling a lot of them were on the second part. And so today, my understanding is we're doing the first part. It doesn't mean that some of last year's second part wouldn't inform this year's first part, but I, I do want to be really, really clear, and Brian, this is, I've been meaning to, this is like an underlying thing for me, is when we set these focus areas or priorities. So last year, for instance, there was a, a budget report, uh, a budget summary that was, that was to help the public understand the budget. And included in it as the priorities were the ones that we set for the superintendent. And that's my concern is that we're mixing up those priorities with the strategic directions that I think you're still going to read to us, which are the basis of our LCAP, which is our district plan. And so I just think we really want to be careful between the priorities we're setting for Brian, that he also communicates with his staff, they kind of are focus areas probably within those broader goals in our LCAP. But our LCAP and our, our budget supports our LCAP and our district-wide goals. It's not just supporting the two or three things we picked to give to Brian, but they need to be aligned. So, thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And keep that alignment. Um, and Michelle, uh, if you could be real, uh, to the point, that'd be great.
So then I, I need to know then, I need to understand, because I get what you're saying, Kim. I'm talking about the second part and I'm talking about what happens with that document if we don't bring it into the process. So, because I don't want to sit next year and take the time to do what we did to come up with that document and then we do absolutely nothing with it. So my concern is how, where does that document fit in? And that's what I was thinking would be part of the conversation today.
Yes, good.
Thank you for that.
Good question. And, um, again, it's been, uh, reviewed by all the board members and it has been utilized for some of their decision-making about, uh, the goals that they put forward. And I, I think Kim's point as far as the metrics, it could still be utilized. So what I would recommend to everyone is during this conversation, if you have it handy, I would get it out and I'm not going to share it because it has confidential information and I have it as well, but to be looking at it while we're having this conversation and use it to inform you about how we proceed.
I took it and broke it down into, I put the recommendations into one document. If you want, I can email it to you. So I took, I pulled the recommendations out and made it just a document by itself.
Can you email it to everyone and not just me?
Okay. I can do that.
While you're doing that, um, we'll have a comment from Scott and then one, uh, from Elizabeth. And then, then we need to.
No, yeah, I mean.
We need to move on.
Sorry. I was just going to say, yeah, this is the, this is the process. You have to fight, individual board members, if they feel strongly about the recommendations that were in the superintendent evaluation, they have to fight to get them into priorities. That's what has to happen.
Yeah, and Scott, I'm glad you mentioned that, that even though, um, this takes our agenda away from its intended path, which it does, it is the process. And it is absolutely true that we need to make sure that, uh, you're all in alignment and feel comfortable, not only with the process, but with the outcome. And it can be very frustrating and, um, uh, and painful at times, but, um, you're right, this is a process. Elizabeth, did you have another comment before we? Okay. So what I'm going to do now is, uh, as Michelle is emailing us all the recommendations, I'm going to show what, uh, Kim was talking about briefly, just to, uh, continue our thought process about, um, what guides us as we make these decisions. And I don't want to spend a lot of time on this. Um, but I do think, one, it's important, uh, to, um, review these and reflect on them. But two, they actually, again, they fit in or they, they collaborate, if you will, with what you have submitted. So there is, so I want each one of you to think about what you submitted and I'll, I'll give some specifics. So dynamic instruction, the first part, you know, talk about, um, career, college alignment, uh, innovative programs, uh, curriculum, um, and, uh, differentiated instruction. All of that goes to what several of you placed as a priority, which is, um, academic achievement. It's, um, also, um, making sure that, um, kids are able to read. Literacy was raised by several of you. This fits very, very well in what you talked about. The next one, outstanding staff. There, again, several of you, not just one, but several of you said, we have to retain the people who leave hired. We have to provide the, the conditions for them to want to stay. We have to provide them with opportunities to grow and develop within our, our, um, uh, organization and we have to work on the culture, um, to make sure that, um, everyone feels welcome and that they feel valued. This, number two was, um, talked about by several of you as well. The quality and learning environment, that goes back to number one. Um, one aspect of this that, that is underscored is the culture. So you'll see that when I put up your list, several of you said culture. And so it's, um, just to be clear, it's how do people feel? One of you mentioned it, how do they feel when they walk onto campus? How do they feel, uh, with their peers? How do they feel with? feel, uh, with their peers, how do they feel with, um, their leaders or their administrators? Um, are we, uh, care, do we care about them, do we respect them, do we appreciate them? And then the, the last one is where several of you focused your attention, so it's, well, actually not the last one, second to last one, um, and we need to talk about number five, too, but, um, well, and hopefully, I'll move it up, so hopefully you can see it. High-performing accountable organizations, so several of you talked about whether it's the finances, whether it's administration, whether it's staffing, um, how, how is the structure operating? That absolutely was discussed, and then the last one, and, and this is one of the ones that I'm most passionate about, just to be frank, is the collaboration and partnerships with, uh, within the community, um, how are we working with community-based organizations? How are, you know, what's our relationship with PEF like? What, um, how are we interacting with our families, um, the stakeholders overall? So this, um, Kim, thank you for, uh, sharing this information with us, but I thought it was really important that, um, we would talk about it. Now, what we're going to do is, you have, and, and I'm gonna have to tragically shorten it a little bit, um, but I want you all to be thinking about, um, just a statement, why, why should we be, and I'm gonna give you an overview, but why should, and, uh, Patrick, I'm sorry yours aren't on this list, but I'm gonna ask you to talk about it extemporaneously, um, why are these two very important, and how do they overlap with others? And, um, I'm gonna give you a cheat sheet, I've already done a little bit of that matching, so here is the, and it's just the list, not with your metrics, and thank you all for being high achievers and providing metrics, but we won't, we, we have to do the goals first, um, before we can get into metrics. So this is, um, this is the list, um, and, yes, I'll probably have Kim go for, you know, Kim, that's interesting, and I wanted to go bottom to the top anyway, so I'm gonna have you go first, so thank you for raising your hand, but what I did with your, um, uh, your submission, is I, I took away all of the detail, this is just your first statement, um, which I interpreted to be your specific goal. So everyone is listed there, um, now, the, the key code down at the bottom, uh, and I hope that's high enough everyone can see it, but what I've done is I've, um, combined or the overlap, so the overlap, and they'll make sense in a minute when I show you the other document I created, but it's priorities, uh, one, two, three, four, now, just keep in mind, I have to be clear, the priorities are not, um, in that order, they're just numbered that way, it's not like priority one has to be done first, just as a clarification, but you can see that we have buckets, we have pocket, we have pools, we have areas of unanimity, and we have areas of, um, what I would term, uh, kind of a, a critical, um, balance or momentum. So the categories that I observed are district enrollment levels, uh, culture morale, which has been stated over and over again today, uh, retention, recruitment of staff and teachers, uh, community partners and communication, the next one is literacy and academics, which several of you mentioned, too, is a priority, and then organizational structure. So the, the task for us right now is to hear, and again, I just want two minutes, no more, of, uh, why did you pick what you picked, and, um, uh, what is, um, how do they, based on what we've said, how do they relate to, um, the recommendations from last year, and how do they relate to, um, our core values? So, before, oh, one question I need for you, from you, is do you need to see this while you're talking about, while we're talking about it? Maybe it would be good if you looked at it, right? Any preference?
Can you, uh, mail it to us? Cuz it's hard to, if I zoom in, then I kinda lose my ability to mute, unmute.
Okay, I think it was emailed to you, but if not, um, I can add it to...
Can you quickly add Pat's two items?
I can tell you where I am, where I am, I'm basically a B and an F.
Thank you.
And, and Tina, the reason why I didn't add it, I, I just received them a few minutes before we went on live today. Um, so, uh, Kim, oh, okay, do you want me to share the screen so you can look at them while they're talking about them?
Yes, please.
Okay, so I'll leave it up, I can see all of you. I would like to go in reverse order, and then, so actually, Patrick, you're, you're gonna be last, but, um, Kim, then Tina, then Scott, um, if that's okay with everybody.
All right.
So, and please, try to keep it to about two minutes, oh, for all the audience members, what you're thinking about is, um, how might, how might we be able to, uh, create a, um, a priority area or a goal out of what my colleague is talking about, and how then, um, does it fit with my perspective? Um, how, how can we prioritize these? Okay, go ahead, Kim.
All right, so what I wanted to say, Brian, cuz, uh, something you said triggered this, so when you list a goal or something you wanna achieve, it's extremely helpful to be able to describe what it looks like when there's success, what it, what does the successful outcome look like? And I think that's really helpful when you are doing goals with other peoples, because, other people, because if I just say, "I want academic achievement to get better," well, that has a picture in my mind, but it could strike seven, six, seven, with our governance team of eight, seven different pictures in everyone else's mind. So you, you have to define what you mean when you say, "I want this, this is what success looks like." And so, very, very closely tied to that is, once you know what success looks like, the metrics write themselves, so I was a little, but to me, you can't really set the goal without saying the metric, because they are, they're intertwined. No one knows what we're actually saying success is unless we have the metric. And I also got a little squirmy when you said we were gonna work on strategies today, because I'm pretty sure in somewhere it reminded us that we are saying the what, and not the how, and, and strategies sound remarkably like how, so we are going to say, "We would like this outcome in these areas," but we're not gonna tell the superintendent how to achieve it. So, um, my goal areas, and, and I did try and go back, I went back over the sheet this morning and kind of made notes where I thought, I saw people going into hows, including my own, um, sorry, just, I just wanted to look at my detail a little bit again, because I tried very much not to be too much in the how, and, and in my, I know you just have the top level, in my breakdown, I might have veered into the how, but I think I was trying to pinpoint the, the where, um, and that's why I listed the outputs really succinctly, I, I tried at least. So, um, functional PUSD systems, foundational PUSD systems, I said, and this is one of our strategic areas, but I really think that it's so hard to do all the other work if this work isn't there, so that's, that's why to me it has to be a, a high priority, because it will get in the way, if we're not doing it, it'll get in the way of us achieving anything else. And then I did pick literacy and graduation rates as a subset of all the possible academic achievement we could focus on, although I did list every at-risk group, but again, we should be focusing on most of those, so hopefully that didn't go too long.
No, it was perfect, uh, thank you for starting us off. Um, yeah, and then I won't, um, I will respond to your other comments later on after everybody's done. Thank you. Um, Tina? And Tina, thank you for dropping in the chat the questions that, um, are guiding this part of the discussion, I appreciate that.
Yeah, I'm just working off the agenda, so we're trying to answer, why is it important to you, the PUSD, does it need to be done right away, why or why not? What resources might it require to achieve? I'm actually not ready to, can, can I go later? I wanna hear other people.
Yeah, absolutely, um...
I'm supposed to evaluate like everybody else's and kind of make an argument why mine should be a priority, or is it a lot of...
You know, I'm a little confused, too, Brian, can you just say this again, what we're supposed to do?
Sure.
Thank you.
And, uh, let's, let's have a, we're gonna have a visual, so thanks for slowing me down, uh, because, um, I'm trying to catch up. So, what we're gonna, the visual is, oops, here we go. So, um, what are your two areas of concern? Why did you select them? How are they impacted by these factors? And I cut down the time because we, we had that other discussion. So I just wanted you to be thinking about, and this goes to, uh, I believe it was Elizabeth said this a little bit, well, several people did, um, things change, so there are some different challenges this year than there were last year, so what, um, when thinking about growth, what type of growth or what type of activities or programs, what are they, what's practical at this point in time? Uh, the risk management, um, you know, several of you had talked about declining enrollment, there's a whole issue of district properties, there's financial stability, there's classroom challenges, which we are all experiencing right now, whether, um, you know, uh, we're, what, depending on the, the devices we're using and our Wi-Fi, stability, those sorts of things, um, what are the, the challenges in front of the district right now? And then the, the alignment, what, um, and, and a lot of you, um, in your comments, you talked about it, so what could we be doing better or more of to meet the needs of the children and families stakeholders? So, um, this is kind of the, uh, I guess you would say, rubric that you would use as you're making your presentation, and, um...
You know what, I think I can go, Brian, if you want me to, I think I got it.
Okay, great, why don't, why don't we go with Jennifer next? And Kim, if you want another swing at it, um, I'll, I'll give that to you because you didn't get to see this.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna give this a shot, it's a little complicated. Um, all right, so I'm seeing the recess slide, let's take a break, yeah, good to see everyone. Okay, so I just chose one, and as I said, you know, I've only been a year on the board, so I, I'm a little uncomfortable about the superintendent goals, because this is about our chief operating officer's job, right? So I do defer to some of the people who are here longer, but I went ahead and went for it, and I went for it because this is why I'm on the board. Um, I chose growing enrollment, and what type of growth is practical at this time? Let's, I'm gonna say something about that, and I'm only gonna take two school sites. One is, is Blair with the Armenian program, that we have students from 17 different cities in that program, that's growth, okay? Now, some of those cities maybe, in, well, Pasadena's the only city, so where are they coming from? I, I wanna know, that's growth. It may seem like a little bit, and it is, but it's still growth, it's not in the minus. The other school is John Muir, the, uh, the dual enrollment with PCC. We, I know, and then maybe there's more, but I do know that there is one student who is being driven to John Muir by his mom to attend John Muir from La Cuenada because of the PCC dual enrollment. That's growth. It's just one, but a plus one is not a minus one. So I think these are two tangible, concrete things, that if we pulled our minds together on the board and started to really get into the, the details of this, we can come up with some creative ideas. And so that's an answer to, we're, we're in declining enrollment, but we have two examples here that I know of, of growth.
Yeah, so the, your suggestion would be, or your, the goal would be, is to increase enrollment?
Yeah, that was my, my goal, and you know what, even after I wrote it, like I said, one year on the board, even after I wrote it, it's like, am I really gonna put that off on the superintendent? My gosh, you know, declining enrollments all over the country, but this is something I think about a lot, because when we're in declining enrollment, I wanna stem that tide, and we have all the building blocks in place to stem it, I believe so. It's a big vision, believe me, but I'm willing to do the work to build the building blocks to get there, at least to stem the tide, and let's increase it by another plus one, or another plus 17, maybe 17 turns into 30.
Yeah.
But then you're sort of on a roll.
Yeah, and that would be the metric, um, that you would measure it by.
Right, yes, okay, I love that, thank you.
Is there anything else you wanted to say?
No, that's it, I'm done.
Okay, great, when we're, okay, Tina, we'll have you go next. I'm going to start the screen share again, just so you can see everybody's, um, goals while, while we're talking about it.
Brian, I don't know if you saw, uh, Scott's chatroom entry, he has to leave at 3 until 4:30, so you may wanna let him go next, so we...
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
We don't miss him.
Is that okay, Tina?
Yeah.
Okay, Scott, you wanna talk about your two goals?
Yeah, um, I was listening to what Kim said about, uh, when things get chopped off, so I'll ask you guys to refer to the longer version of number eight that's on your screen right now, because under that is the connection with the, what are we gonna call it, we're not calling it superintendent evaluation recommendations, we, I guess we can, um, but certainly the, um, there was a concern, uh, based on our last year's evaluation about budgeting, and, um, that I organized under culture of ownership, uh, and so you'll have to look at my original, uh, piece where I talked about, to me, um, that means, um, you know, all the values, transparency, using our fiscal resources equitably, responsibly, well, we can't do all that unless we have up-to-date information, we can't redirect resources for equity. Um, also I put in there, so, I, I heard what Kim said, so to ignore my one and two metrics, which are, uh, how, the what, I did have two whats, and number three and four are variance less than $3 million in, between adopted and, um, uh, I don't know the actuals, or whatever interim you wanna pick, and I don't know, it doesn't matter to me. Um, and then a reduction in use of consultants, I do feel that, and this is all driven, all my recommendations are driven by, uh, a lack of resources, which is become painfully, uh, aware, I've become painfully aware of, which, or I'm, I'm reminded of, I guess, when we do negotiations, if we don't have enough money to give what we would like to give. So that's where I'm coming from, we do use a lot of consultants, um, every, every board meeting that documented, that Kenny created long ago, is full of consultants. Um, and then also under ownership and culture, the absences, we often get, well, we can't do this because this person is not, uh, they're out for some reason, I'm not talking about COVID, of course, but they're just out for some reason, so I don't think that that's, reflects ownership, uh, we all wanna pitch in. And then, uh, the other one about reducing admin, which is on your thing, it's number, uh, seven. Um, yeah, I just think, as I said earlier, it's just a more equitable and fairer if, when we make the reductions that I believe we're going to have to make to give the salary increases and to have our mandated reserves, uh, and, and, and we haven't even, we're gonna give even more money when we talk to other bargaining units. Um, well, we need to reduce, uh, fairly, and we regularly do reductions by enrollment of teachers and classified, but we just don't do it of admin, and so I would like to move us towards, and again, my metrics aren't there, but my target would be some sort of enrollment-based, uh, staffing ratio for central administration, and my target, I also mentioned another target of going back to the level of admin before, uh, COVID. And again, uh, I'm not talking about COVID-funded positions or grant-funded positions, right? We all know those are temporary funding, hope, hopefully they, they, uh, we don't have to pick up permanent funding. Okay, Brian, I don't know if I answered everything.
Yes, I think so, um, thank you for, uh, describing it, and, and hopefully you can stay on, uh, for a few more minutes and hear...
Yeah, and I can, at 4:30, if you're, if anybody's still talking to each other, no, I'm kidding, um, uh, if we're voting... Um, if we're voting, I'm happy to do that.
But the, the, the timeframe is till five. Um, based on our rich and thorough and profound conversation to this point, I would imagine we will still be talking at 4:30.
I'll stay, I'll stay on until three and then I'll reappear, yeah.
Okay. Great, thank you, Scott. Uh, Tina, I think you were next.
Thank you. I'm actually glad Scott went before me, cuz I do see, um, common overlap with our choices. So mine was retention, recruitment of teachers, stabilizing teaching staff, consistency of credential teachers to provide quality education. And again, I've mentioned the diversity hiring many times, or, or some sort of approach with the same outcome. And the success indicators would be something like monitoring the number of subs needed and ensuring that that decreases over time. The vacancy list for hard-to-fill positions goes down, and we could monitor that weekly, um, and that there's not a fluctuating, um, number of teachers throughout the year. So for example, like if there's a class, you know, maybe it was hard to fill that teaching position, and then the subs comes in, and then maybe another sub comes in, and then like a new teacher comes in later. So we should track, you know, which classes are those happening in and, um, try to recruit for those, those positions, because what hurts, it hurts the students because there's not that consistency of instruction. And, um, so those are the metrics, and it does tie in, it, this is, you know, retention, recruitment of teachers, that's like a really big bucket, and that can include salaries, right? You know, desirable salaries, and that's kind of what Phelps, Scott Phelps was, you know, providing in his approach with the, um, reduction of S, 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 staffing. And if we had more, um, control of our finances, then it would free up money for teachers. And, um, I mean, I don't know, I, I don't think I need to argue that teachers are the ones providing the education, so how this ties into our strategic directions, um, you know, number two is outstanding staff, dynamic instruction. Well, we need the most qualified credential teaching staff to do that. Um, we just came out of COVID. We know that, uh, there's a teaching shortage, so we don't wanna be the district that's, you know, like, just taking any teacher, right? Or, or we wanna keep those teachers that are really great. So we need to be differentiating ourselves from other districts. So why would a teacher wanna stay with us? Why would a teacher wanna come work for us? So, um, I think, I mean, actually, Dr. McDonald brought that up earlier, so, um, I think we're in alignment there. Um, and then the other one is literacy. Again, I mentioned earlier, we had this great new program, Math Power Hour, and our LCAP is based on our math, right, performance, and our, um, and our reading performances. So we're just sort of, you know, those are the basic building blocks for our kids, and I always think about, at the point of third grade, you're switch, kids are switching from, um, learning to read to reading to learn. So that's why, um, learning to read by third grade is one of the goals I mentioned, and, um, again, this is a student achievement-based goal. And, um, um, one of the metrics is increased attendance of preschool and TK, so that more students have more foundational skills by kindergarten, provide early intervention resources before grade three, um, increased curriculum that connects to cultural and linguistic histories, um, um, also known as by literacy, um, by providing quarterly or bi-annual report of increased cultural linguistically diverse curriculum disaggregated by school, grade, culture, language, ethnicity, reporting on how many lessons, uh, were used new, the new curriculum and was, um, and disaggregating that by school, grade, teacher, and subject matter. That would be a potential metric. And I believe another board member suggested literacy as well, so, uh, that's it.
Great, two thing, uh, yes, there is overlap, like I mentioned, uh, and you can see the, where the As and the Bs and the, they all fall, um, kind of overlap. And, uh, Tina, also, thank you for, uh, tying it back to the, the district's values, uh, very specifically, that was really helpful. Okay, so we have a couple more, and what, what I'm, uh, what I wanna do is have the rest of you speak, and then we'll take a break. And then, then we'll come back and I'll show you, um, how I've assimilated this information, uh, based on what you're talking about now and, um, on your submissions. So I think Elizabeth, Michelle, Patrick still have to go, and like I said, um, Kim, I'll give you another swing at it because you didn't get a full, um, explanation. So who would like to be next? Uh, Elizabeth?
Yes, I, let's see what my, first of all, I have to apologize for submitting three, and I will officially pare them down to two. So my two would be what you see here as, uh, number three and number four. Number three and number four, um, which are both related to relationships. My, my basic underlying thought with all of this is that we should, first of all, in the coming years, strengthen our foundations in these COVID times, because although I just heard that we've just come out of COVID, I think we are coming out of COVID would be a more accurate and hopeful thing to say. But I think we should strengthen our foundations, and as Mr. Cahalan said, achievements will follow, I believe, if we can keep our essential workforce and, and trust among all of the constituents, if we can keep those strong. So rather than, um, rather than itemizing the, the data for success, such as achieving higher test scores or, or, um, higher graduation rate, or any, anything that, that is, that focuses so closely on achievement, details this year, although of course, we all want those achievements, but I would say we need to strengthen our foundations. And so that's why I wrote, to improve the morale and the positive culture, to help to attract and retain good people. I heard someone also agreed with that. And then I would like us to foster and strengthen our ties with the community partners, like the city, PEF, Penn, PCC. These mean so much to us, and if we can keep those strong, we can get through the rough waters until we are past this most difficult year. And I just, I wanna mention two things that were, were brought up to me by Dr. Barnes, that I think are part of strengthening our foundations. Number one is this inventory of programs that is underway, which is also going to check for academic return on investment. And when that inventory is complete and we look at it, we will be able to see which are the programs that are being successful and seem to be the most valuable for the money that we are putting into them. So that will strengthen our foundations. And then the second thing, she told me she is doing a review of the staffing in each department, and that should give us a sense of, of what the valuable work is that is being done by, by each individual. And I see, I see in this list of priorities, I see a couple of things that kind of pull against each other. One is reduce central office staff, and another area is, well, increase their workload by requesting and compiling a lot, a lot of reporting. The reporting could be... Yes.
Just a quick observation is, we will work on an analysis in a few minutes, so if you could just focus on your, um, your, uh, proposals or your, your submissions, and then, then we can analyze, um, the pros and cons and, or the challenges with each one.
Oh, yes. All right, well, thank you. Well, I'll just conclude by saying that my two seem to be devoted to the relationships, the ties, building our foundational strength with our own staff and also with the many partners that we have. So that's what I was most, uh, concerned about in my proposals. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to clarify, so are you combining, uh, numbers two and three then? Or, um, or are you, you're kind of withdrawing number two?
I think I should withdraw number two because I, I'm only allowed really the same number that other people have.
Okay.
I, I see three and four as related in this whole basis of strengthening our foundations, but I will let number two go.
Okay. Great, thank you. Um, uh, Michelle, Patrick? Who would like to go next?
I'll go ahead and go, cuz I'm gonna be really brief. Um, so for mine, what is it, number five? It's really small, but...
It's five and six.
Okay, five and six. So five is develop and implement a communication plan or system that promotes internal and external communications. This will need to, to involve community partners, the media, and district faculty and staff, including school board members. Um, I think that that's important to PUSD because we need to tell our own story, and we need to, um, get out in front of issues or potential issues that other people will take and, and put their own emphasis on things that may not really benefit the district. So there's a lot of negativity that, that, um, is out there as far as people's perceptions of PUSD, and I don't necessarily agree with it, but I fault us because we do not get out in front of those things and tell our own stories, nor do we, um, address them. We allow them to just permeate throughout the community, and I think we need to do a better job of that. Um, as far as internal communications, I believe that our employees are our cheerleaders. I have said this over and over and over, and the more information that we can provide to them, um, and, and then take the, present the same actions, I think the better that we will be, um, as a district. But we need to create and, and we need to put our own narrative out there and not allow others to do that for us. Um, and let me see. Create, number six is create and implement a clear and coordinated career pathway for classified employees, non-management, starting from the lowest level. This should include a process for prioritize, prioritizing internal hiring and internal job postings. And, you know, um, this can go, uh, for certificated staff as well, except for, I see certificated staff having more opportunities to, um, move through a career pathway in the district than I do for, uh, classified employees. And, um, it's unfortunate because, um, with professional development and people who get training and get experience and, and work in our district for years and years and years, committed to our students and whatnot, um, when they decide that they wanna go to school for their education, um, they earn a degree, instead of staying with PUSD, they take all of that and they walk out the door, and another district benefits from all of that. And I think that, um, if we were to create career pathways within PUSD and not have internal candidates competing with outside candidates, but actually have them moving up through the ranks within the organization, I believe that we will hold on to the continuity, um, of services and commitment to our students, and we'll have experienced people within the ranks of the organization. And so I think it's something that needs to be implemented more sooner than later, and I have been saying that for years also. So, um, that's it.
Terrific, thank you, Michelle. And, um, we just have, uh, Patrick. Um, Kim, were you gonna wanna make another comment again, or are you, are you okay?
Sure, brief.
Okay, so we'll have you do that after, uh, Patrick.
Okay, um, so my first one, I called operational clarity. Um, specifically, I was, uh, I was thinking in terms of making it easier for, uh, both employees and community members to help themselves, um, which I think is part of our communication problem. Uh, so I was thinking about this in terms of, uh, deliverables, um, which I guess Kim might say crosses line. I guess it depends on whether or not you think it crosses line into what or the how. Is asking for an org chart a what, or is it a asking an org chart a how? I guess that depends on, I'm not telling you how to write your org chart, but I think we should have one. But I think, I think, um, you know, the, the pretty common, um, characteristic of complaints that we hear about the district are either, I reported this as a problem or an issue or a concern, whether it's, I didn't get my stipend paycheck on time, or, you know, I had an issue with a district employee, or I had a question about who is supposed to handle this issue or that issue. Whatever, whatever the issue or concern is, um, the response that we get from some member of the public or from an employee is, I told somebody about it, nothing happened. Um, and there's many reasons why something may or may not have happened, but I think, uh, a, a part of this, I, I recognize this, part of this is a burden on our staff, in that when you have too many things to do, and I bring up this analogy all the time, you can either fight fires or you can do forestry management, right? I can either solve the problem that's directly in front of me right now, I can whack this mole, or I can unplug the whack-a-mole gene and, and fix it, uh, and then plug it back in again. And since our, our staff have a tendency to be overworked, particularly in the last two years, um, it just gets to the point where, because people are complaining that things aren't getting done, you're spending more of your time trying to resolve individual issues and less of your time trying to change systemic processes that prevent those other issues from arising in the first place. And I, you know, been on this board for six years now, or it's going on seven, and it doesn't seem like we are ever going to get to the place where we are fixing systems unless we make it front and center, our, uh, a priority for this year. So that's why I chose that as my number one. Um, I think it plays into a lot of things other board members, uh, brought up. I think it would improve morale, um, you know, like if an employee goes, I submitted my stipend check reform form 10 slash 42A, and I haven't heard get back from this person, where is it? You know, uh, we live in a world where if you go to the FedEx site and you click on it, it will tell you whether your package is still at the shipper, it's in transit, it's at the distribution center, it's on the road on the way to your house, or it's been delivered. I am not suggesting that we need to get there tomorrow on, when am I gonna get my coach or coaches' check? But at least knowing that those steps exist, what personnel, you know, and I'm not talking about people, I'm talking about positions, are involved in those steps, and, you know, where you would, where you would go to, to find out, um, more information about where your issue is, I think will rapidly cut down on the number of communication requests we get and make sure the ones that we get are going to the, directly to the right people, which will just, that'll, that'll make morale go up, it'll improve communication, it'll improve transparency. And I think it's necessary to, to get to my second one, which was significant ongoing reduction in overhead, which is mostly, you know, central staffing costs. In order for us to do that without gener, without generating more, you know, animosity and lowering morale even more, let's face it, any staffing reduction is gonna, is gonna be a net negative short-term morale, and it just is. Nobody wants to hear that you're gonna cut positions for people that they like, even if they're, they're not doing a job the district needs to be done. But I think, you know, one of the big struggles with that is, we only see, we recommend this position be eliminated when it comes to, when we've had budget crunches, but we don't know what that means from an organizational process standpoint. And I, I think having that clarity makes the, puts the board in a position where we can then turn around and defend staff, when we say, well, we needed to cut 8% from, from central so that we could afford to do this thing that everybody tells us they wanna do, but that means that this outcome will follow. You know, this process will be slower, um, this person has to, you know, this change needs to be made in the org chart, so that the employees also understand that this is not, like, nothing that we, that we do to save money, to improve salaries, comes without some service cost. And we, we need to be upfront and transparent with the public, and by the public, I, in this particular case, I mean mostly our employees, that people in central do jobs, and if they're not there, those jobs are going to change and, or, you know, take longer to do. to do, and that will impact you as a worker. Now, if, I get it, you want more money, but if that comes with these, you have to understand that it's going to come with, with this associated cost. Unlike Scott, I will say that, you know, since he made a specific mention of, of paying consultants, if it takes, you know, a consultant to come in and, and look at a process in the facilities department or in, in some other department, as long as the board commits to using the, the consultant's report to hold the superintendent accountable for a change in process and we actually like do something with it, then I would support that sort of expenditure because I, I don't think it's necessarily necessary. You know, I think there's plenty of people on the board that can do process evaluations, but if we don't want to get too deeply in, you know, the management governance balance, we don't want to knock that out of whack, it's probably not best to have board members as the ones that do a, a process assessment on various departments. So, you know, in a, in a three-minute nutshell, that's essentially what my two were. But I focus far, most of my metrics are just straight deliverable, so it's a binary metric, it's either yes or no. Did we get this? Then yes. If we not get this, then it would be a no, as opposed to a percent increase in something. You can't really have a percent increase in department processes published on the department website. That's, you either do it or you don't.
Great, thank you, Patrick. Can you, would you, either you or Diane make sure that all of the board members receive what you, you sent to the rest of us?
Well, I sent it, I sent it to Diane. I, I think it'll fit in the chat box. I, I can paste it right now. I think. Yes.
Please send it in email so I don't, because I'm on a different device than my normal device.
Yeah.
Diane, can you forward it to the rest of the board so I don't get it?
So she's, Diane sent it, it's under the link for today.
Okay.
Thread. That's why I couldn't, I had trouble finding it too.
Yeah. Thanks, Tina, for letting us know. Okay, Kim.
So again, I'm answering the questions about growth, risk management alignment, or the urgent, which ones am I answering real quick?
Growth, risk management and alignment.
Okay. Okay, so my two, one of them is about academics, student literacy, learning how to read, and then the other's graduation rates. So I'll just say that I'm pretty sure we would agree that if our kids aren't literate by the time they graduate, that's a bad situation. And if they don't graduate, it greatly limits their future. We are an organization that is, our sole job is to educate kids. So I'll be uncomfortable if we don't have a focused priority that relates to our main function. And I mean, I just, I think, I think it would be hard to explain to people why we have the main function of educating kids, but all of our priorities are maybe more related to adults. So I, I think we have to grow here, it's not so much whether it's practical or not. We need to do better by kids and, and if we don't do better by them soon, then that often can lead to people deciding they need to go somewhere else to get it done.
Well, and that fits in, Kim, you're right, that, that fits in with many of the core values too, right?
Well, again, it's our main business. So, and then the, the operations side of it, having foundational systems, I think I said before, if we don't have those, it just makes everything much more difficult. If we can't pay our people on a timely, in a timely basis because our systems are bad, it just becomes an unpleasant workplace. And again, they will leave. And that may remain, not happen, no matter how much we increase their pay, it doesn't really matter if we give them a larger paycheck if they never actually receive it, or they, if they put in extra hours and aren't getting paid. So those foundational aspects of, you know, are we running well as an organization so that we can do the work we're here to do, which is to educate kids? Again, I don't think we can wait to do that because it's holding us back. And, and so fiscal stability and understanding where we are and matching our planning, what we want to have happen, and then allocating the appropriate amounts of budget to make sure it happens, that's the only way we're actually going to achieve our goals. But we don't have a process to do that now. We roll over our previous year's budget. So it's going to be difficult for us to meet any goals, academic or otherwise, unless we have a better planning process. So again, these are, one is very, very foundational in terms of operations, that we can do our job of educating kids, and then literacy and graduation rates are so important for those kids' outcomes and for the community as a whole that I think we really need to focus on.
Great, thank you. Tina?
I just want to say quickly that I, I want to echo what trustee Kalen said about putting out fires and, you know, our job, part of our job is to create, to ensure there is a system, like there's a process, like we should be thinking what will be our legacy when we're not here. So that's, and I, I'm quoting from the Governance Core as well, is one quarter of what we should be doing as a school board is governance is a systems job. High-performing trustees with a governance mindset are first and foremost systems thinkers. So this is, this is totally within our role and it's not that we're saying this is how you should do it, but we are ensuring that there is a system, right? That we recognize something's broken, so let's make sure the system can address, you know, that, the brokenness of it. So I just want to say, you know, this is, this is something we should be doing and yes, it would stabilize our district.
Yeah, and one thing I'd like to, or one thing I wanted to lift up about what both of you said is that you, you are responsible for overseeing the system and you mandate or you guide or you assist or you direct the superintendent to create the system. Okay, Jennifer?
Thank you. So thank you, Tina, for picking up the Governance Core. I'm glad I brought it with me today.
We both, we both took that class.
Yep, we both got the book, I read the book. And as far as systems thinking and like the putting out fires, that is talked about in here, that trustees don't put out fires. We look at the pattern that's creating it. We are, we look at the system. But in order to look at that system, we have to be cohesive on the board. And so a lot of the superintendents that are quoted in here, and a lot of the board people that are quoted in here talk about professional development regularly, like once a month, which I think is really important for all of the things that we have to tackle in a school district. So thank you, Tina, for engaging with me on that. Thanks.
Jennifer, thanks for describing that really well. It, I think that is extremely valuable. All right. What I'd like to do is give you a 15-minute break. Is everyone okay with that? Anyone opposed? Before you go, your assignment during the break is to think about what you just heard on a couple of levels. First of all, be analyzing your own presentations and what you've put forward. And based on what Tina and Jennifer just said, what is, what is your role as opposed to the superintendent's role, first of all? And secondly, what in what you presented could be implemented by, how, how might the superintendent respond to your directive, your own personal directive? How, how do you see the superintendent implementing it, responding to it? By what means would, would it be viable? So think about that for your own. And then for everyone else's, we will move on to the questions of prioritization. So is it urgent? Is it important? Is it important and urgent? What needs to be done now? What needs to be done later? So that when we come back, then we can start to winnow this list down. And I have, I have a proposal for all of you, which I will share with you then, about how we might be able to address many of the topics that you have put forward. Any last questions or comments before we go away for a break?
I just said I'd like to apologize again to all my fellow board members and to you, Brian, for getting my homework in late, because it, it helped that most of the things I brought up, I think were incorporated in what Kim and Scott wrote, but it, I really should have managed to make a way to get it before you, before, six minutes before the meeting started. So I apologize again.
Well, Pat, mine was almost as late and Brian hasn't said anything about how late mine was. But Brian, I just want to reflect back, did I hear you say that you want us to think about how Dr. McDonough will implement? Because again, it feels like that's getting into the how and it just feels like we should stick with the what do we mean when we're setting these goals so that it leads very easily to the metrics because we're, so that we're clarifying to each other what we mean when we say we want this to get better, but, you know, what does that mean? So that we all know. And...
Can I answer that one first?
Yeah, and then just, do you feel that we'll select some and walk away today or no? I, I mean, we can prioritize. Yes.
Number two is yes, and number one is, thank you for asking that question because I was not, the way I presented it is not the way it was inter, well, anyway. The way I want you to think about, or I would ask you to think about, it is not, I don't want you to think about the details. Don't think about, you know, is he going to create X, Y, Z program or system? I want you to think about is it, what is practical for him to accomplish? It's more about is, is what you're asking him to do viable for him to respond to, to be able to sort out?
All right, so like on a SMART goal, I can't remember if it's the R that stands for reasonable or, you know, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks for asking that question, Tina.
I'm going to push back a little bit on that because are we saying that if it's too hard, then it's not going to be chosen? When you say viable?
Well, the, and I like that question too, thank you for asking it. It's not that, so the, the choosing is what, eventually it's what you all want. All I'm trying to insert here is a, a practicality of when you ask someone to do something, what is their chance of success? What is their ability to take action on it? The assumption is with everything that you've put forward, that he could magically, well, that's a poor term, that he would be able to respond effectively on all, all of those areas. And all I'm saying is just consider what is practical, what is realistic, and yes, in the SMART goal of thinking, it's the realistic area. Does that help, Tina? It's not that anything's going to be kicked out. I mean, because eventually you all...
I think it just comes down to the measurability anyway, so I think anybody, anything can be measure, you know? It just depends on the metric, really.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so it's 3:21, so at 3:36 or say 3:37, let's all come back, okay? Get up and walk around, talk to someone else besides us and get your, you know, blood flowing and we'll see you in a little while.
Thank you.
Brian, can you send me by email the document that has the, the...
It looks like, it looks like it's lasagna. I think she's going to give us all a plate of lasagna and some salad in a minute.
How is, how, how is the dog?
You're muted, Michelle.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. All this time I've been muted and I'm just talking. The dog is fine. He's right here at my feet under the table. The lasagna is good. It's from Pinocchio's.
Oh, love it there.
Mm hmm. Can we, can we see a cameo appearance of your dog?
I don't know. Let me see. Come here, baby. Come on. Come here.
Okay, while she's grabbing the dog. Jennifer, are you with us? If so, then we'll
Oh, yes. She looks beautiful.
Wow, what a pretty dog.
Now I'm all clean and fluffy. I liked it better when I smelled like scum.
No, he smells so good and fresh. I can hug him now. Say bye, mommy.
I guess I want to ask Diane if this is being recorded or broadcast, or maybe that's a best question. Was the dog, did that go out to the entire universe?
That's a best question.
Uh oh, I forgot about that.
Yeah, I can, I can see that'll be a meme on social media pretty soon.
Paid. Does that mean I'll get paid? Or will the district get paid? How does that work?
No, your dog, your dog will get the residual. The dog will be an influencer.
Okay, we can do that. We can do that.
All right. Well, welcome back, everyone. We'll try to be efficient. So I have a plan. And but, well, not but, so well, I want to go through a couple of slides first, or just to kind of set the table. Then I'm going to show you a document. What I want for your consideration, and Patrick, I think I have some of your content in the document, but not probably fully. So I want, I want you to be thinking about what's missing. For everyone else, when you see the document, there are a couple of things. One is, it's a different sort of a rubric to try to measure or evaluate performance. It's, it's just a different structure. So be thinking about, does this structure work? Is it, would it be practical, not only for you, but for the superintendent? And is it covering the topic areas the way that you want? And just to reiterate, or to go back to what Kim was saying, the document I'm going to share with you should not have, I have to edit it again, maybe, but should not have any of the how. It's more of the what. And we can all go through it together to, to make sure that that's the case. And it does not have metrics because that's something I think you should all come up with. But anyway, it's a proposal. But before I do that, let's look at a couple of key concepts. In the, so let's just talk a little bit about decision making, you know, as we mentioned before, why is it important to you? Why is it important to the PSD? Then the urgency, what we talked about before, does it need to be done right away? Is it urgent? Is it important? And then also be, be balancing or be thinking, what are the resources that might be required? Will it take additional resources? Is it something that could be handled currently with what we have? And just an observation, some of what all of you proposed can be done with existing resources. It's a matter of either reorganization, restructuring, or reallocation. So these are some questions I want you all to be thinking about. Then here, of course, is the Eisenhower matrix. Again, urgent, important, urgent, or not important, urgent. Could it be, could it wait a little bit? And then urgent, not important, what could be delegated, what needs to be, happen soon? You know, last year, we talked about this a lot with the pandemic. The technology issue was, you know, extremely important and urgent, and so it needed to be dealt with right away. And then what are items that could be phased in or worked on later on? The other area I want you to think about is the, the monitoring or checking in. And consider what you did last year. So you sent, you provided the superintendent with a list of goals or objectives to be met. And then would, I guess I, I didn't attend every single one of your meetings. I, I attended a few, but not every single one. So I'm not sure how there were periodic check-ins. So let's talk a little, we'll talk a little bit about that before we leave. What, was it calendared? If so, how did the superintendent report progress on each of the items? And then the last area, and we'll, we'll circle back around to all of these as well. But let's say you ask the superintendent to work on that community engagement. Several of you mentioned relationships with the community, how do we partner more? How do we collaborate? What is your role in that process? Or how, and, and maybe I want to change this question a little bit. How can you help to make the superintendent successful? What could you do? How could you step in? And, and, you know, to one of your points, you all have, many of you have jobs outside of this. Many of you have, all of you have families at a very varying levels. So what is practical for you to do? And what I'd like you to be thinking about is just one, one area that you might be willing to step forward on. Maybe it's introducing the superintendent to different parts of the community, or maybe, you know, there are other ways that you can help. But think about how that might happen. So I'm going to stop the sharing out for this part. And then I want to, as I said, share a document with you. And this is based on best practices. I mean, I can't say it any other way. This document is based on what other districts have utilized. And in my research, it came up, not only the structure, but also the content. So let's take a look at it. And I want your feedback. I also have, I just sent it to Diane. So if she's able to email it to all of you, then we can look at it simultaneously. So let me explain to you what this is. And Brian, I'm glad you're here. I, I would like to have your participation in this phase of the conversation as well, just to give us a little bit of your perspective on these goals. So the first part is up at the top, you see that the way this would work is that this could be organized. I put it all on one page, just so that it wouldn't, we wouldn't have to scroll through four pages. But normally, the way this would be is each one of these would have its own page. You would be ranking on each of these goals, one through four. And then you could also provide the recommendations and commendations that you did last year. At the top, of course, is the, the date, the board member, the assessment title. But what I've done is taking all of your data, I would say, is I've coalesced into, and I'll scroll up just a little bit so we can see the whole page, into four. into four priority areas. And again, what I want you to be looking at is, does this incorporate your thoughts or some of what you proposed? And I believe it does incorporate pretty much everyone's thoughts. And then secondly, what the viability is of the superintendent's implementation of these. And to Kim's point, again, these are what you want to see happen. So these goals are the how success looks like. So the first one is expand focus on student achievement and well-being. This came up very much. And Kim, let me walk through this and then I'll take questions and comments. This was repeated over and over again. This is what we're all about. It's academic achievement. So the goals within this reflect back on student achievement and well-being. So student engagement, the creation of a safe, nurturing, learning environments, curriculum, rigorous curriculum, innovative signature programs, which some of you mentioned, recruitment efforts, which take into the consideration the enrollment issue. And then literacy. And all of these goals are just a proposal. This is nothing that, this is just my assimilation of your ideas. They can all be wordsmithed. They can all be adjusted. They can all be improved. But this is, you know, summary. So number two, and then Tina, I see you'll be next. Number two is, and again, these are not in any order of needing to be done one right after the other. But they're just, and it could be A, B, C, D, however you want to put it. Anyway, the second area was the area around how staff feel. It was around how staff, how we're doing with recruitment. It was around how we're doing with building a culture, morale, how all those are dealt with. So those are listed on that area of goals. Number three is the the section on community engagement and communication, which was raised on several occasions earlier today. How are we communicating? We've we've got great stories to tell. How are we communicating it? What could we be doing better? And then also the the building or the continual building of trusting relationships and cooperation. So that's number three. And then priority area number four goes more to the technical side or the organizational side, which several of you talked about. Goal number one may not be as relevant anymore. So we could certainly, especially based on what Patrick was saying, we could adjust that. The other ones are talking about utilization of funds, the staffing levels, and then the operating systems. Just to yeah, just to talk about it. Again, the way you would score it is if, you know, depending on how you felt these were completed at the end of the year, highly effective, effective, needs improvement, unsatisfactory. And then, of course, you can write the commendations and recommendations for each one. And these are some sources that I used for reflection or the development of this system. So let's take observations, comments, and so one last thought is, as opposed to attempting to score the 13 or 12 or 13 comments that everyone made, which we could do, I thought it might be productive and efficient for us to try to utilize them for a scoring system for the superintendent's evaluation. So we'll start with Kim and then we'll go to Tina. And I'll leave this up while people are talking so that they can reflect on it.
So Brian, I appreciate you putting this work together. I'm concerned, though, so. A, this is huge, what's on this piece of paper, especially when we add metrics to it. And so, for instance, goal one under priority one, promote student engagement through the creation of safe, nurturing and enriching learning environments. I mean, this is a strategic direction. This is an enormous, ongoing area, and it's only one out of 13. Now, I maybe you're saying that we're going to be narrowing this down. But I'm saying the way this is worded isn't a goal. It's it's a it's a part of the district that needs to it needs to happen. So I guess I was thinking more that our focus slash priority areas should be places where we need to make significant growth, like we really want to focus on this area. Or where, oh, there's there's a situation that isn't, that needs work, that needs improvement, and that's why we want to focus on it. And rather than just big, general areas, I mean, each of these goals could have 10 or 20 metrics. And I'm pretty sure Dr. McDonald doesn't want that. And I don't think that we want it either. So I feel like we should, when you did the categories, A through F, and so that's six categories. And it it feels like we should prioritize the categories and then work at on our articulation of what we mean and what outcomes we want under each category. So that's my take.
Great. Thanks for starting us off. Very helpful. Tina.
Thank you. I again, I do appreciate this consolidation of information. It's very inclusive. But yeah, I'm concerned too that Dr. McDonald seeing this document and just freaking out over it. It's very scary. It's a lot. And I will say that I I'm sure other board members went to CSBA's. There was a superintendent evaluation workshop. I went to that and one of the things was like, one of the, you know, pitfalls of a superintendent evaluation is like too many, too many goals. And they said, you know, four or five goals, you know, I thought four or five is kind of a lot, too. I mean, if you go down the metric. So I do feel I agree with Kim. Let's be laser focused. Let's let's give Dr. McDonald some, you know, various specific areas to have your smart goals. And this is very difficult to do that. I want him, I want to set him up for success. And one thing I learned from, one thing I got out of going through this process before is that it seems to me that having very clear, smart goals, measurable goals, is gonna set him up for success. And so this just, this actually makes it very abstract and big. So, yeah, I do want to go back to the previous document of where our descriptions are. I think that's a better direction.
Okay, thanks, Tina. Other observations, thoughts from board members? Michelle?
I'd be interested to hear Dr. McDonald's perspective on this list.
No, I, Brian, I appreciate your attempt to categorize things, but but I do agree with the previous comments. This is an expansive list that would be hard for me to, well, first of all, like, remember Kenny said, for each goal, coming up with metrics for those, by the time you're done with that, it would be so unwieldy that there's no way I would be able to meet all of these and have a successful evaluation. At the end of the day, you know, it's all about what's best for the district and for kids. And focusing on too many things at the same time is not the most efficient way to do things. So I concur with all the comments that were made.
Great. Elizabeth? Or before we go to Elizabeth, Michelle, did you have a follow up to that?
No, not at all. I I mean, I agree with my colleagues, but I just, you know, I don't like setting limitations on people. And so I'm looking at the list. It looks ambitious, but maybe Dr. McDonald may be up to it. I just needed to hear whether he was or not. So I'm just, that's all. I just needed the information. Thanks, Dr. McDonald.
Thanks, Michelle. Elizabeth?
Yes, I have to concur that there is so much here. And I think these are all ideals that our superintendent understands should be part of the continuing work of his office and of his staff. But I would I would like to see us go back to those A through F components that you had on an earlier slide and pull together some of those possibly and and make our selection from that that group of proposals.
Great. Any other board member comments?
I'll just, you know, issue concurrence. I think that this is a good document to keep around because I think it, you know, for tracking how the board has thought about things over the year. I think this is this is a good assessment of that. But yeah, I like that. I actually like the idea of the A through F framing and trying to focus on, you know, which one of these do we, do we as a board think that really should be the primary one? The A, B, C, D, or F? And then inside that, which one or two do we think should be the the sort of where we really want Brian to focus his energy this year? And then with, because I think that will really consolidate the metrics conversation when we have it, whether we have it today or not. Where I agree with Brian, there's 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 just there's just too much here and some of them I don't think we could, I don't, like, I don't. I think that Brian takes it already as a as a job mandate to develop a program that teaches kids to read by third grade. But I don't know how we would measure that in a way that we would we would call that goal met or, you know, how we would how we would declare declare progress, especially in the current year where we know that, you know, the kids are, the kids have to recoup for lost instructional time over the last year and a half, two years. And so I don't know if it's a reasonable expectation to expect, you know, better test results by the end of this year. And so just that discussion, I think, is is not well framed with a with a hard number conversation. All right.
Great. All right. So we'll go, we'll go back to the other document. What I would like you to keep in mind are how these are worded or or just keep in mind what what is on this document in case you want to pull from it. And I asked Diane to email it to you. Just in case you want to pull from it to be able to create the goals that you're talking about. But we will, so let's go back to the other document and work on those, the category areas. And then try to develop some specific goals for those category areas. And it is right here. Who knew that two years ago that I would be proficient in WebEx and Zoom technology? That wasn't, that wasn't on my career goals, but here we are. So can everybody see that? Is that up high enough? I'm not sure I can get it any higher. Maybe I'm not as proficient as I thought I was. So the categories at the bottom, district enrollment levels, culture morale, retention, recruitment, teachers, staff, community partners, communication, literacy, academics, organizational structure.
I think Dr. Palmory wants the screen to be skinnier or something.
It seems to be cut off on the side. Yeah. There. Well, I don't know if other people are seeing it this way.
Yeah, no, I
Now we can see it all.
Yeah, I had just zoomed in. Someone else said earlier that the font was kind of small, so I zoomed in a little bit on the categories. But hopefully that that works for everybody now to see everything. So the the question would be, how or which of these categories would you like to? Or going actually back to the Eisenhower matrix, which one of these is urgent and important? And you can't say all of them.
Brian?
I have a question.
Oh, sorry.
No, Kim can go first.
Well, I was just gonna, on the back of the sheet where I was drawing scribbles, I think I was wondering if we could collapse. Sorry, I had a second. Um, retention, recruitment of teachers and staff under the organizational structure? Because I think some of those items were under there in terms of issues with HR and paying our teachers well. So that's just an observation to put those two together. So then it it's makes one makes one go away.
I'm fine with that. Any any opposition to that? So I'm I'm going to, and then let's go to Jennifer. I'm going to type into the document as we're talking so that we can make progress. We just have, we have a little bit less than an hour and I would really like to leave here today with three to four goals for the superintendent.
Brian, if I may, along the lines of what Mrs. Kenny just suggested, we could combine three. May maybe eight, maybe nine. Under one category, and six, under one category of culture and climate or something along those lines. This is one of my goals, so they align.
Good, yes.
So from that standpoint, we could move on from there.
So Brian, do you see at the very bottom the categories?
Yes, culture, climate, right, B.
Yeah. And so what would I, what would I add to culture and climate?
So it would be.
I think you were adding C in there because you said number three, right?
Right, nine as well, yes.
Does that make sense, Brian Berry? That was, so nine was a C and he's saying, put it in with B.
Okay. So that's that's different than your suggestion, but is that okay with you, Kim?
Well, here's what I'll say about culture and morale. Is I think we need to articulate what we think needs improvements and how we would, what? How would we know, looking at it as a board, whether it improved? Or what do we want Brian to do that we could look at and say, look, he did those things? And we are all in agreement that doing those things will improve that area? Again, getting us to the, what do we mean? I mean, it's a nice, you know, cultural morale, but what is it that's broken? What do we want to fix? What what wonderful outcome are we trying to achieve? So that we all agree with each other and we know what we mean.
Yeah, really important. And well, just so you know, the queue is Jennifer, Elizabeth, and Michelle, and then Tina. But Brian, before we leave your suggestion, was there any other components that could be combined from a category perspective?
Well, I was only looking at that one, at culture and climate. I continue to look at the the other categories. So if you'll give me a minute, you can move on. You can come back to me later.
Okay, great. Jennifer?
Yeah, so we're looking at priorities, right? And I, right, correct, Brian? And I, right, correct, Brian?
Yes. And, and we're also looking at similarities or overlap, how, how these could be combined.
Okay. So priorities, I really, in looking at this list, I zeroed in on number three. Dr. Palmeroy's, the improving morale and positive culture, because I do think that aligns with a lot that we talk about on the board. And I think that's incredibly important. As far as my input on the increasing enrollment, I think that's something I'd like to initiate on the board with, but that's going to take a lot of board work and systems and governance thinking. But that's something that I would like to do, but that's neither here nor there right now. The morale and positive culture does fit into that. And so I think that's pretty important to me. That's all I'm going to say on my priority because I have that one priority. I would have an issue with number seven that I would get to later. I don't think that should be on the priority list and I have some concrete reasons as to why.
Yeah. Great. Just to clarify, Jennifer, for your priority, are you saying that you would take it off the list and work on it independently?
Well, I don't want to be hanging out here alone and nobody voted for my thing. And I have a feeling that's what's going to happen because it seems nebulous and abstract. And I think there's a culture in our district that we are quote unquote, a declining enrollment district. Now, that's true. It's also true around the United States. And it doesn't mean you can't work to stem the tide. In fact, I think it's imperative that we do. But I'm not sure how, I, I'm not sure I want to give that to the superintendent because I think working on the metrics of that is going to take all of us as one coherent team in partnership with each other. And that's something I'd like to work on. But I would take it off.
Okay. I've moved it to another area. All right. I think Elizabeth was next. And please unmute when you have a chance.
Could, could you scroll up to the items that I had expressed? Would you far the upper page? Yes. And also I just want to say in connection with, with Ms. Hall Lee, that my, my item two is parallel or similar to her item one, that is to stabilize enrollment and attendance. But I have already let that one go. And I agree with her that the, the board as a whole can think about how to do that. But I want to talk about improve morale and positive culture among the staff, among the staff. So if we just say climate, culture and climate, perhaps that suggests the school sites. And I think our attention and his attention would be to his own staff, really. I guess that includes the principals and the teachers. But my thinking was a central office, in which case it's really, it's partly connected with Ms. Bailey's point about wanting to give opportunities from within for staff to grow. And so I, I was thinking about, let's see, culture and climate. I was thinking about how should we express this now? Address or improve the culture and, and climate within the, within the central administration? And then I think it's up to us to ask him, how, how does he, how is he going to be able to do that? How will he do that? And let him figure out how, how to do that. But so that's my take on, on culture and climate.
Great. So we're seeing that there's quite a bit of interest on the part of board members for improving the culture and climate of, for staff. And that contributes to retention and recruitment of teachers and staff.
Yes, exactly.
I think Tina was next, and then we'll go to Michelle.
So just to be clear, the retention recruitment of teachers and staff is addressing the teacher shortage. And if we're making that a subheading to culture and climate, then I don't think that matches the intent of my, my goal. So I don't want to dilute the intent behind it. Something like, I mean, obviously salaries, but like working conditions or having mentor teachers, you know, like I'm just trying to imagine when I was a new teacher, you know, what the, what could have been different? Like I wish I had not all the tough kids, right, in my classes, something like that. So I don't want the category of culture, climate to dilute the importance of the teacher retention recruitment. So, I mean, part of the risk is, okay, if it's its own category and nobody supports it, then it's gone. But if it's a subheading to something else, since there's a chance that be, you know, included in the goals. So I'm not sure, I, I actually think it's better under organizational structure if it was under something, but I'd like it for it to be its own because I want it to be priority. So that's my conflict right now. So I would support moving it back to organizational structure or have its, you know, back to its own category. Because if we don't, don't have teachers, we don't have education. So I want this to be one of the top priorities of our district and I want us to get ahead of it. So, I mean, my daughter spends more time with her teachers than they do, than she does with me. So that's a really important aspect of our institution.
So a quick question for Brian. How, how does the culture and climate of a school site contribute to the retention or recruitment of staff and teachers?
That's a significant part of it, which is why I was advocating that all of these items, so in other words, the, what I was trying to accomplish with my suggestion is that those category, those items on the culture and climate become a priority and, and not be taken off the list. So Ms. Fredericks, that would allay your concern. You know, even though you want it to be its own separate category, embedding it on the culture and climate, to me, would, would ensure that it's not taken off the list and that it, it is.
Yeah, I, I mean, get that. I get that strategy.
My overall plan that I will present to you in the near future, that's a significant component of it. So, but, but I'm fine either way. I was just making a suggestion. You, you can.
As long as it doesn't lose its intent, then I'm okay too. So.
Yeah, we, we, I, I think everyone recognizes the extreme importance of the retention and recruitment of teachers and staff. So let's all agree that as we move forward, that, that stays a part of the conversation. Is, does that help, Tina?
Okay. Yes.
Okay. We won't, we won't lose it. Michelle, you're next.
All right. So I actually agree with what Brian just said around making the culture and climate part a priority. And I believe that the number six speaks very strongly to the retention and recruitment of teachers and staff. And that's with regard to a career pathway. And I do believe that it is time. It's just time. That needs to be a priority. And I don't see how we would be able to address that area of the culture of the district if we don't include a career pathway.
So, so this was one of the ones they suggested be under that category as well, number six. So whether or not the board prioritizes the ones that, that I called out, I'm going to do them anyway, because that's a part of my overall plan. So ju, just so you know that.
So we shouldn't use these up?
Pardon me?
Just kidding. So we shouldn't use up these choices?
They shouldn't use these wishes. They have limited wishes.
All right. So thank you for that, Dr. McDonald. And then number five. So all of this, there's, let me go back to culture. I'm, I'm not sure of what, I heard what Kim said, okay? But there are so many different areas that culture impacts in different ways. I don't see culture as a one size fits all. I don't think that resolving one culture in one area is going to actually fix everything. I think this is going to be an ongoing process, but I, and I cannot wait for the board, for us, to have the opportunity to really discuss our culture. Because I think once we get ours improved or, or we, we start addressing the issues that we have as a board that will impact our culture and how we govern, I think that we'll start seeing a change throughout the organization. And so I can't wait for that conversation to happen, but it, it's going to take more than just a 10 minute or a five minute conversation about culture. And so I just want to say that about culture. But as far as the communication, that's an area as well where I really think we should prioritize. I don't think that the district does enough in that area as far as, like I said, making sure that our narrative is out there. We should not have to wait until, you know, the media prints something about a board meeting or about something that has occurred within the district. So, and, and I agree with Jennifer. It's all about systems thinking. All of this is systems thinking and, you know, a shared vision. We've got to get the vision down into the workforce where they see it and they can begin to put their own work and motivations towards the realization of the vision coming to fruition. So, you know, I mean, this is a good conversation. I'm appreciating the conversation. But I really, as much as I want to see what Dr. McDonald is going to do, I'm really interested in what the board is going to do next as a whole. So thank you.
Great. And, and I highly recommend that, that you guys set aside some time for that. Kim, you had your hand up next.
Sorry, I didn't realize I was so soon. So here's what I'm going to say. We want, so we have an area, culture and morale, but we need to start saying what it is about that area that we want to improve. So Michelle has said clearly that there should be a career pathway for classified employees. So if that could be a metric where we say, there should be a document that exists that is, that, you know, therefore can be shared with all classified personnel about their future career in PUSD. So that's a metric.
There needs to be a policy.
Well, I'm just saying, but we're not telling Brian how to do that. We're just saying, we need to see this thing at the end of it because when we see that thing, we will know that all the classified staff know what to do.
Yes, Kim, you're absolutely right.
All right. So then going to the communication planner system, I think we really need to be clear on, okay, so all of us have to remember what it was like when we sat in the room and said, let's do Brian's evaluation and let's say whether he met his metrics or not. Remember when we did that in November or October, whenever that was? And then we said, oh, our metrics weren't very clear or, oh, it's really hard to tell if he did that. So we need a metric that describes what will be better about communication after that is not there now, rather than saying we want him to develop a system. Because there is a system, but I guess the point is it's not working?
Well, I thought it was clear on what I said needed to happen as far as communication. I don't, what was it, number five?
You said develop a plan or a system that promotes internal and external. So we already do have internal and external communication, but you must think that it's not what it could be.
You know that it's not what it could be.
I know that, I know that, and I.
It's not what it could be.
So then.
So we just need to be able to describe that, Michelle. What is that? We need to what?
But I have, I talked about how others tell the story for the district instead of the district telling its own story.
So at the end of.
We need to get out in front of.
But not how, but not how, what will be the result? So is the result, no newspaper stories about PUSD that are negative? Like what is the result you want?
We can't control what other people are going to write about PUSD, but we can certainly tell our story. So who, who has the credibility now? If our stories, if they, if they replicate what's actually going on inside of the district, within the district internally, that means our employees will begin to vocalize that what we're putting out there is really actually happening. You will see growth in our students' learning. You will see, you will begin to see the, the changes that are happening. But we need to tell it, just like the way that I do with my community meetings. Every time, every time I decide that I'm going to move the dish, every time that Brian and his staff decides that they're going to move into a new area, for instance, transformation, I have something coming up about that. Culturally responsiveness, I did that. I mean, you gotta communicate, you gotta get out in front of it, you gotta keep it out in the community.
Right.
So, may I say something?
Well, hang on one second because I just want to give a really concrete thing. So one of the things the parent group has been talking about is oftentimes, a lot of people will say, parents will say, whoever will say, oh, the district doesn't communicate well with us. Rather than just kind of saying, oh, that's what's happening, the parent leaders group decided, what if we try and work with the district and come up with a rubric, just like teachers do for their classrooms, that say, here are the important components of communicating with parents. Timeliness, multiple language, multiple methods, clearness of wording, you know, simplicity, you know, whatever it is. And once we have that rubric developed, it's really easy to evaluate each piece of parent communication to say, yep, that met, or whoops, we slid backwards a little bit there.
But the parents aren't the only group that we.
No, no, I'm using as example of a concrete thing that, and again, it's more, it's a little bit of a method, but I'm saying, what is the end result?
So Kim and Michelle, you're jumping ahead a little bit. All of it is valuable and needs to be discussed and in particular about the, the metrics for measurement. But we still haven't defined a goal yet, which is what Kim is asking us to do. We need to define what the outcome is that we want. So Jennifer and then Tina.
I just wanted to jump into that little exchange because I understand metrics, but when we're talking about changing a climate, we're talking about things that are a kind of abstract and what Michelle was talking about as far as getting our story out there, that's something that has to come from the board. And so we're, I'm seeing overlap here between goals for a superintendent and how the board is going to support the system so that he can achieve those goals. And I don't think our board is necessarily at the top of the heap when it comes to that. So that's something we have to keep in mind as we go through this and we have to go through it step by step.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. That is one of my requests for all of you as well, is to see what your role is. Tina?
So when, Brian, when you mentioned, Brian, our facilitator mentioned, let's focus on the goal and then do the metrics. The problem is, I, I don't quite understand the, without like maybe an example of one metric for a goal, it's hard to really understand that goal. understand that goal to know if it's a good goal. Like you said before our break, or at the break, that, you know, make sure it's a a smart or viable thing. And so in order to know if it's viable, I have to figure out what's a possible metric for it. Which, that's why I'm like, kinda struggling with this. So and then to address, uh, I think what Kim was saying is like, if, you know, culture and climate is our goal, then I guess the question is, how do we know our culture and climate is working or the way you envisioned it? What is, what does that look like, is what the metric would be, I guess? But we're not talking about metrics right now, so.
But you you bring up a good point. So the point is that in order to validate a particular goal, you need to figure out what metrics will fit within that goal. Or what what metrics help to measure that you have actually achieved that goal?
Okay, I I have, I have to jump in here, because I think we're we're talking about a differences in how people think. And I think it's really important to set the goal. And that's why I put the goal of the enrollment, which I know to some people is like an impossible goal. It's okay to set a goal that may seem impossible to some people because you can build the building blocks to get there. And so I think setting the goals is really important, and then we have to sort of flush out the the metrics part. But, sorry.
I don't think it's it's about impossibleness, it's just understanding the the-
And when it's the culture, when it comes to culture, it may be something that takes a little longer to to begin to see the the change or the difference that's being made. So, so is that something that necessarily requires a metric, or is that something where that requires more action? More, you know what I'm saying? So can, so if you wanted to develop a metric for addressing culture, which you need to clearly define which area of culture you're directing, I mean, you're you're addressing, um, you may wanna uh develop a metric that addresses the actions that are, that it's going to take um, to actually um get in there and begin to address that issue. Changing culture is not something that happens overnight.
Isn't the action how, though?
So-
But but, no, I have to say one other thing here, um, in that if we had more experience as a board in thinking in terms of systems, this conversation right now would be a lot easier.
Okay, so, and Elizabeth, just hang on, you're next. Um, just to summarize where we are, you have uh four categories that um are still in the mix. There is a considerable amount of support for what has been described as um culture and climate, which includes uh retention and recruitment of teachers and career pathways. There's another area of communication and uh community partners. And then the literacy, which came up many, many times previously, uh, and academics, and then organizational structure. Uh, we could have a goal for each one of these.
Brian, did you say four or five?
Four.
But that's because you combined C with something else.
Yes, so um the recruitment, it's on, can you see the screen?
So remind me about D. Remind me how we talked about D.
So, to recap, um, Jennifer pulled her recruitment and enrollment. She'll work on that independently. Um, C and B were combined, and also career pathways were added to that. Um, so it's culture, so the retention and recruitment of teachers and the career pathway contribute to the culture and the climate of the school site. The second one is uh community partners and communication of shared vision. The third one is literacy and academics, and then the last one is organizational structure.
So I guess what I'm trying to get at is D, which was Michelle's number five, about the commution, communication plan, feels like it has to do a little bit with culture and climate, certainly internally, maybe not externally. And for four, which is also D, I didn't think we discussed that at all, but continuing to foster and strengthen PUSD ties, again, is is ongoing work. I don't know that we see that it's a problem area. I don't know that, in other words, if you're just continuing something, I don't know that it's a focused priority area. So I I guess I'm kind of trying to advocate for D being either collapsed or going away. If that's clear.
Yes, that is clear, that's helpful. Um, Elizabeth, you were next.
Patience, sorry, here I am. Um, communications, as far as measuring and metrics, we, isn't it correct that there is now a committee of our staff and 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 a number of other people working on a communications plan? And I, it seems to me I saw a matrix that showed a a whole range of possible types of communication and who they would, who they would be for, and it was, it was a system of communication. And so I believe that that is in the works. Is this not true, that some some such plan is in the works? And if it, if it is, if it is implemented, then I can see that it would be measurable. That would be the number, we could even assess the number of of outreach communications of different kinds that go out to different groups, and it could, it could become, I think, um, measurable and something that could be, we could um make some judgments about the success of that communications plan. Now-
So that's my point, because everybody didn't, was not aware of that. I mean, that's the first time I'm hearing it.
Is that right? Well, Dr. McDonald, tell us about the proposed communication plan.
Yeah, so we did hire a consultant to work with us to uh develop a communications plan.
Hmm.
Um, we have, we currently have a committee, um, and we're going to expand that committee in the near future. If you recall, we did send um a a survey to you about um what you would wanna see in the communications plan. I think that was mostly the, what we were trying to ascertain. Uh, so we're well underway with that. And so we we hope to have something formalized um and presented to the board by the end of the year. Maybe even in the next two to three months, at the most.
Well, this is very good, and I hope that there is a component of what board members can do.
Yes, there will be, which is why we, which is why we wanted input from the board. I think only one, I think maybe only one board member responded. If if member serves me right.
I hope it was me.
I don't remember.
I hope it was me.
One or two, so we can send it again.
Yeah, because I don't remember seeing it, so.
Um, all right. So that's, that's a potentially measurable, um-
Yes, I I do have one more-
Body of work, I think.
I have one more thing to say, if possible.
Just enough, let me just add one more thing about-
Yeah, let's, let's, Elizabeth finish, then we'll go to you, Jennifer, so hang on just a sec.
Okay, so this is about communication. Now, the other, the other point about the culture, which is an amorphous thing, but basically, one possible tool for measuring would be a survey of some kind of staff, and I think this has been undertaken before, um, asking them how they feel about working for PUSD and in what areas they have not felt supported and so forth. And there have been such surveys, isn't that true, Dr. McDonald?
Yes, that's correct. And and I just wanna make one quick point, Dr. Palmer, Palmero, if I may. And that is, that, you know, maybe, so that we're uh efficient with our time today, is to let me put together a document kind of laying out what I plan to do around culture and climate. Um, and and I might take a stab at um some metrics as well um that would serve as a guide to the board. Um, so that that's, you know, I'm offering that, so you know, we could postpone the the conversation around metrics for that category for today.
Oh, I'm, I would be in favor of that, and I hope fellow board members would agree. Thank you for that.
Yeah, we'll take a, we'll take a quick vote on that after Jennifer um makes a comment.
I I would, um, I I concur with Elizabeth on that one. So I'm rereading this number four, P E F pen are are vital community partners, fostering and strengthening. That ties in with enrollment. There are many organizations and political bodies um who don't have their children in PUSD. And if we can really shine in our partnerships and what we're doing, I think that ties right in with enrollment. So I I think this is incredibly important, and I look forward to what um the superintendent will present to us.
Okay, how how does everyone feel about um having Brian make a presentation on the communication plan and then determining uh further metrics uh from that, uh as a result of that presentation?
Well, it could be both communications and um culture and climate, those two categories.
Well, so Brian, Barry, are you saying that Brian will send us the information, and then when we reconvene to finalize this work, one of the things we'll have in our hand is his suggestions before we finalize?
Yes, I I, that isn't exactly what I was proposing, but um I I like the sound of that. How how is everyone else feeling about that? Okay, while while you're thinking, uh, thanks, Michelle. Uh, while you're thinking, so, uh, one of the difficulties with this process has been, and I think it was uh Jennifer who kind of uh summarized it really well, is just the collective understanding of what goals and metrics are, and then how they are uh crafted. So um, what I've tried to do right now is to capture what you all are saying about what you would like to see happen. So the goal is what you want, the vision that you have. What what do you want the superintendent to be able to take action on to change? So that there is a brighter future, a better future, the 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 outcomes are better for folks. So that's what the goal is, and then as several of you have mentioned very um accurately, uh, the metric is um how you measure that. So-
Brian, I'm sorry, you confused me again. So you have goal A, was that one of your four?
Um, what, Kim, what uh goal A are you referring to?
No, that was a carryover. That was a carryover from what you had before Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's, I thought that was a heading for this new page. I am so sorry.
No, no.
So when you say goal, develop effective broad communication plan, is that one of the four priority areas, or are you now making different goals?
No, it's under, it's under the the B, or no, the D. All I'm trying to do is put language to the-
Well, okay, so here's, here's what I'm gonna say, is a priority area is a goal. And then it can have metrics, but I don't think we can have three priority areas with then three, four, five goals. Then we're back at 15 goals. Which, listen, I've been on the board where we've, where we've sat for hours and hours and hours, and we narrow it down to 15 or 20 goals for our district. I don't know if Elizabeth remembers those days, uh Scott probably does. Um, so, I guess I thought we were trying to come down with three goals and multiple metrics to achieve the that goal, not subgoals. You've got subgoals, if these are all for D, there should only be one goal, not multiple goals.
No, they're not. No, I'm just, so, okay. Eh, if you would like, I am happy to leave the language that you see here.
I guess what I'm saying is we need, we need to describe B. B needs to be able to be described as a goal with all of those components in it, and they will become more clear in the metrics for that one goal, but not creating new subgoals.
That's exactly what I'm doing.
Okay, I'm sorry, I see two goals there, and are you saying they're for, ones for?
No, so-
It looked like they were both for the same priority area.
No, they're separate.
All right, so we kept four, we didn't try and go down to three? That's, maybe that's where I'm used to.
That hasn't been determined yet. I was just trying to tackle the first two because they seemed like they were more urgent.
Well, these are, okay. I would, if, we didn't really talk about prioritization, but um develop effective broad communication plan with roles for board members.
So that's um D.
Well, that's
So all-
That's one, one, okay, that's one of the 13 goals, sure.
No, so D, if you look above, it, all it says is community partners, communication of shared vision. So all I was trying to do is uh place language for the communication part, which is develop effective broad communication plan with roles for board members, which is what I just heard uh people saying. I'm just typing, I'm just typing out the words that that board members are presenting.
All right. Metric two sounds more like a, an action than a metric. It's it's something that will happen.
Yeah.
Unless we wanna rate the superintendent on whether board members participate, which doesn't seem right.
Two things, these are all proposals that, again, I'm just writing down what I'm hearing people say. And secondly, um, it could be a metric or it could be an action in the sense that you could say 10 board, or not 10, seven board members contribute to the plan implementation, or five contribute, whatever your percent, 30% uh contribute, that's how it would be a metric. So Patrick hasn't spoken in a while, and then Tina. And Tina, I'm sorry, I'm not tracking any of the tech, the chat because um I'm screen sharing, so it's hard for me to follow. So when you speak, if you could talk about whatever you wrote in the chat, that would be good. Uh, Patrick? And go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
That's a very nice way of saying, hey, dummy, you're still muted. Um, so, um, so we sort of jumped ahead into talking about uh B a little bit more fully before everybody sort of cast their their votes for categories. Um, so I I think, I think we are, we've gotten into the the, how do we fit the categories together? Or how do we fit this thing that I cared about into that category before we even settled on the categories? So my, I'm, I'm, I feel very strongly that F is kind of the most important one. Um, I may be alone in that regards, but that's sort of where I stand. Um, and then the second one, to to some extent, is B, um, in so much as I think a lot of B follows from the stuff that I think we need to fix in F. Um, so I I I thought that maybe the problem, we can, we can go around in circles in these conversations, but I think the probably the first place is for us to figure out where we're starting, so at least we don't circle back around uh and start walking back through on our own footsteps again. Because we can, we can put other uh flavor on top of culture and climate, for example. If we all agree that culture and climate should be the focus of 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 this, the rest of this conversation. But I don't think we've established that yet. So if if I have to pass a a vote, I would say, I would cast a vote, vote for F and then vote for B, and then I would ask, if you only, like, without any, without getting into any of the other details, if you as a board member had to choose between A, B, C, D, and E, and F, as the 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 framework that you would like to use to focus the rest of this conversation, which two would you pick? And then, once we get a a count on which ones are the most popular- And then, once we get a count on which ones are the most popular, I think we could probably move forward a little bit more constructively with that as the main focus. So if everybody's willing to do that, I'm going to F and a B, and I'll let other people vote. But I think we've already focused a little bit too much on the weeds of B before we even determine that everybody really wants B to be the focus, so that's.
Patrick, I just want to say you're absolutely right. And the main reason why I surged ahead, probably poor choice of words, is the time. We've only got about 15 minutes left. And the second one was to try to demonstrate the distinction or how goals and metrics are formulated, how they work. So I'm happy to take a vote as well. Let's have Tina weigh in first, and then we can take a vote on those four. Tina?
Yeah, I agree with Pat, and we kind of rushed that. But I realize you're just trying to move things along, but in the process, it kind of got things muddled. I agree, I kind of like what Pat said about going around and voting. But my point is that the metrics, my understanding of what metrics are is, I mean, if you think about students, the student outcomes, it's not really the action that, like, when you say, like, seven board members will contribute to plan, that is the how, in my mind. It's not really to demonstrate that you'll get a effective broad communication. Well, yeah, I guess that's a plan. Yeah, I'm a little bit confused on that one, actually. But anyway, my definition of metrics is there's some sort of outcome. And then the staff and Dr. McDonald decides how to get to that outcome.
Yeah.
I just want us to be clear on that.
Great.
That's it.
So the way in which seven board members would contribute to plan as far as a metric is that you're measuring how many participate. So it's not, you're not, you aren't asking them. It's the outcome, so it's a result. So let's say you had seven board members, and four out of seven contributed, and your goal was five out of seven, then you didn't meet your metric, you didn't meet your goal. Or you fell short by one. So the metric has to be written, and that one certainly could be rewritten 40%.
But Brian, I think Tina's point is the metric should measure the reason and be affiliated with the reason you did the goal. So if the reason we're doing a communication plan is to make board members participate, that's a great metric. But if that's not the reason we're doing it, it may or may not be a good metric for what we're doing. But Tina, you see that sometimes you're not going to be able to measure. Implementing a reading plan in year one may take three years to see results in years, you know, of student outcomes. But so you have to find intermediate things. And sometimes, an actual implementation is an outcome, if you see what I mean?
Yeah.
The starting point.
Yeah, that's true. And so the only reason why I even wrote down the board members was because it was mentioned that there will be roles for board members. That's just an example of how, and you know, I'll just be more clear. It's just an example of how a metric could be written. You absolutely do not have to use this type of a metric to measure whether or not you accomplish that goal. It's just an example. All right, so let's.
Wait, one more thing. I do have issue with board members being part of, the performance of board members is linked to the performance of superintendent. So could this be more appropriate in when we do our board eval?
Okay, look, I'm just gonna, I'll just take that out. It was suggested by a board member in this conversation that there would be roles for board members. We, again, we're past what we should be talking about, as Patrick said. Forget I even mentioned it. It was something that you all brought up, so I was just trying to highlight it. So let's do a quick vote, and for Scott's benefit. We have four categories. I'm assuming everyone can see the categories. You get to pick two. And so what I'd like you to do is I'll just say your name, and you say B and E, or D and F, or whatever you want. So I'm just going to go on.
Brian, we can't pick three since we want to settle on three?
Patrick's suggestion was two, and I thought that there was affirmation, so.
I personally think with seven board members, if we all pick two, we might get three out of it. If we all pick three, we're going to be back to having four, so.
Brian, if I may interject.
Yeah.
Can I say something? I just don't think the board has enough information right now to be able to prioritize or even to formulate metrics, right? I think we're off to a good start. I understand where everybody comes down in terms of a priority. Please do allow me to come up with a document that might help to inform your decision on the categories, you know, that we will prioritize as well as the metrics. If that's okay, it's simply a suggestion, so it's up to the board.
So why don't we vote on that instead? Thank you, Brian. Tina?
Well, okay, I was just going to ask Brian McDonald if he feels he's heard enough about each of the individual things to have our board input.
Absolutely, because I think frankly, the decision has already been made. If we're going to go with three categories, I would fold organizational structure in under culture and climate, right? And you'll see when I complete my document why I say that. You know, and then that would give you the three, unless you wanted to exclude community partners and communication. I don't know. But again, I just feel like if you have more information in your hands, then it's easier for you to make that decision around, you know, which category should be the priority, and then how you will measure success. But again, it's only a suggestion, so please feel free to move forward with your original plan, if that's what you.
I can speak to that.
Hang on just a second, Scott.
Okay.
Tina, you had the floor, did you want to?
It's okay, that's fine.
Okay, so Scott, the proposal is to have Brian put together a document for all of you to be able to review, and then ultimately to make a decision on these goals. So Scott, go ahead, and then Elizabeth, we'll go to you.
The reason I would vote for that, that the superintendent proposed just now, that I heard clearly, is my understanding of the nature of goals and priorities. And Kim will remember where it says this somewhere in some policy, but I know the spirit of it, anyway, is mutually agreed upon goals and metrics, which means between the board and the superintendent. So that's why I support Dr. McDonald's suggestion.
And Scott, I want to validate that. In the research that I was doing in preparation for this meeting, several white papers, best practice papers, said the same thing, that it is done in collaboration with the superintendent, and you'll have much better outcomes. So Elizabeth, you had your hand up.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I just wanted to thoroughly endorse superintendent's suggestion. I think that in the past, we have asked for a super, him and other superintendents to give us their sense of their ideal goals and what they feel they can accomplish. And then it became a mutual collaboration to setting the goals. So I completely endorse and look forward to seeing that document.
Wonderful.
Thank you for offering that.
Thank you. Jennifer, you had your hand up. Okay, you're fine. Okay, I'm feeling as though there's consensus in asking the superintendent to create a document to provide you with more information to be able to determine what his valuation goals will be for this year. Hearing no opposition or?
Just to clarify, metrics within the goal areas, I guess, and describing the goals better. So you're saying both goals and metrics?
That's what he proposed, I think, right, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Then, just to close, because we've come to the end of our time, I want to thank all of you for your enthusiastic and thoughtful participation and for helping us to get to this point. I think it was important to discuss the various aspects of all of your proposals so that you could hear one another and your rationale, where you're coming from, what you feel is a priority, and to know that all of you will be committed to help implement the goals that the superintendent and you collectively come up with. So my last question for Brian is, will that then take place at the next board meeting? Or will that be distributed beforehand? And then what will be the board's opportunity for approval or discussion of your document?
Okay, so I'd like to work with you on this. So when I'm done with the document, you know, I will send it to you. And then we can have a conversation around what that means in terms of the next retreat. Then I'll send that document to the board. And so they'll have it with plenty of time before the next retreat. And then it's up to the board if they want a formal presentation at a regular board meeting or we just do it at the retreat. I think it'd be best if we did it at the next retreat. So that would be the process.
Yeah, I would kind of agree with doing this through a retreat framework. You know, I think it always feels like at the end of these things that we didn't necessarily get everything that we wanted done, and so we feel like we didn't necessarily accomplish much. But I think that it is the only way to move the conversation forward is to go through this level of dialogue. And I thought today was great, even though we didn't get finished. We got to the point where we know what happens next, and I think that's valuable. So thank you, Brian. And I wasn't trying to throw shade on your process there. I'm happy to do this again when Brian's next step is ready to be trod upon, I should say.
Great, Tina?
Dr. McDonald, partner, Dr. McDonald. I hope there might be some academic elements in this report coming up because it'd be great to have one of these goals to be academic-based. And that's all. Thank you all so much for your time on Saturday. And thank you, Brian.
Yes, to answer your question, yes, everything that was discussed here today will be in the document that I send to you. And then from there, it'll be up to you to decide, you know, what the priorities are, and then to set the metrics.
Great. Elizabeth, would you like to make some closing comments to wrap us up for the day? And again, thank you all for your time and energy and thoughtfulness on a Saturday afternoon.
So thank you, everyone, so much. This is just the kind of discussion that we don't have time for in board meetings, but we do in an afternoon and with the expert guidance of Brian Berry. So we thank him. And I think we've all gotten to know each other a little better as not only presenting these proposals, but then hashing them over so thoughtfully. Anyway, my appreciation to all of you, and thank you. We will meet again when we hear from the superintendent. Thanks, everyone.
Great. Have a wonderful evening. Thank you all.
Thanks, Brian Berry.
Thanks, Michelle.
Thanks, Brian. Thank you, everybody.